Welcome, welcome you to our school committee meeting on Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, fourth, two thousand and twenty-four at seven oh eight. Please note, we are videotaping as well as live streaming on our YouTube channel and the recordings will be available on our YouTube channel. Please rise and join us in the light of pleas.
I am the Speaker of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And I would ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence or remember members who we remember, members of the community who passed away and their families in particular. Mr. Jackie, who served as the Rainham Middle School principal, passed away. He was principal for over twenty-six years. At this time, I would like to introduce our school committee members and administration attendants this evening. On my left, Mr. Dan Marino, Mrs. Mainville, Mrs. Davenport, Mrs. Martelli, Superintendent Mr. Powers. On my right, Mrs. King, Mr. Dolan, and Mr. Fitzgibbons, who have stepped out, and myself, the Chair. Also, the attendance is Ms. Barry, there you are, Ms. Togba-Babelola, Mr. Schatz, our Recording Secretary, Mrs. McDougall, and I would like so much to acknowledge the Bridge One Town Council and the Marines Selectmen for joining us tonight. At this point, we will move into public comments. The school committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending the meeting. In order to get those wishing up to speak, ensure compliance with open meeting law and other legal obligations and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will not engage with the speaker or with one another in deliberation on comments as they are presented during public comment. It is at the discretion, thus, committee may schedule issues raised by speaker for deliberation at future meetings. If you would like a personal response, please email the committee or Mr. Powers directly following the meeting. The Chair will now open up public comment for a period of twelve minutes per policy E E D H. And I would ask anyone who wishes to speak to please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and respectfully ask that you permit your comments for three minutes. When your three minutes are up and you've still not finished, I will ask you to submit your thoughts or script to our Recording Secretary, Mrs. McDougall, and she will just review them to the committee for our review. Is there anyone here for public comments? So we'll move to correspondence and recognition, and I'll start with correspondence. I received an email from a parent regarding incident occurring in the classroom, also an email from a parent regarding social education, an email from a former employee, an email from a parent regarding, from parents regarding the new students entering into the district.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I have the privilege and honor to attend the Excel graduation on Wednesday, January tenth. I know some of the members of the committee were there as well. As you know, the Excel program is our evening high school, provides an alternative education for students that are just not able to attend for whatever reason, the day school, but it could be because they have to, you know, work and provide for families, they may have disengaged from school and now have re-engaged, but it really is a program that provides our students an opportunity to fulfill their dreams and goals, and that is to, first, by started, you know, starting off by graduating from high school. So it was a very exciting night. We actually had one of our graduates enrolling or has enlisted in the Marines, and so his recruiter attended as well. We see to congratulate and welcome him. I actually think, Mr. Dolan, if I'm correct, he was shipping out pretty, pretty soon after, after the graduation, so he may have actually already, already left, so we wish him well and obviously, you know, thinking of him. But the other graduates, it was, it was great. There were twelve students total who were slated to graduate that evening, and it just, I know as a district and it certainly is a superintendent, just proud of their great determination that they've shown to, you know, meet their dream and achieve their high school diploma. So it was a great evening, not that our regular day school graduation isn't, but this one just is a little more of a special, you know. It was an honor to be there.
So I was also there that night, and I just want to say, these kids are the most, I, I can't even, do you want these kids to graduate?
Really?
Yes, and I heard a comment, and it was about, it's not about showing off, it's about showing up. Those kids show up, and for those kids to come there that night. And I think it was, uh, shoot, Staff Sergeant McGill, McIlbray, Sarah?
Mulligan.
Yeah. So the very next day, I was at Bridge One Middle School, and a student came in, she was late, and she says, I was at my brother's graduation last night, and he's going into the, he's, he's joined the Marines, and she was so excited for him, and this Staff Sergeant gave the family like care packages, and it, and it was so special for her and for them, and that night was so special. So, thank you, Sarah, and, and everybody else that, that was involved in that. So again, it's, it's not about showing off, it's about showing up, and you were also there. It was a special night.
It was.
It was a special night, and those are the most precious kids and the ones that you want to see succeed. If you did not have that program, those students would not have graduated. So I just want to commend the Excel program.
Mrs. King, continue on recognition.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a recognition that I wanted to note. Last night, our School Resource Officer, Luke Chico, received the Rainham Recognition Award from Board of Selectmen in Rainham. I did nominate him individually. He is such a partner to the school as our School Resource Officer and many, many community groups at the high school and within the different towns, so I felt that he was very deserving and, and he received that award last night by the Board of Selectmen. And I went to that meeting last night, and I could not imagine how many people were there. Like, the town's support of him was amazing and very deserving, and I just wanted to recognize him and let the committee know that he received that last night. I have never seen that many people at a school committee meeting, which was amazing. So congratulations to him.
At this point, I'll move into the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as, as presented.
Certainly.
Motion made by Mr. Dolan, seconded by Mrs. Martelli, all those in favor? Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. At this point, Mrs. King, the educational report?
Sure. I do have a brief Student Advisory Council report, Madam Chair. The Student Advisory Council was not able to attend this evening due to multiple conflicts with the students this month. They had work, sports, and clubs, I think several, or at the DECO competition, so they were not able to make it. So they will be at the February meeting with their report, but I did want to report out on that as we meet before school several days out of the month, one of those dates, they requested Ms. Watson to attend their meeting before school, so she did attend on January third and spoke to them about her budget process and what that looked like. Since we've been going through the budget process, we've been focusing on that aspect this past month with them. So she did attend, walked them through her high school budget process, what goes into that. They were very engaged, she answered all their questions. They were very excited to have her there, so thank you for being there and entertaining that ask of them. I did try and encourage them if they wanted to speak to different admin, if they had other things they wanted to talk about, that they should do that, so they did want to invite also Mr. Powers, so he did attend the January tenth meeting. So Superintendent Powers and Ms. Babelola attended that Student Advisory Council meeting before school. He reported out on his district budget process, how it is in regards to the whole district, and how he prioritizes these and where funding comes from. He clarified some points for them and answered questions from their committee. I'm, as we go through this year, as I've been with them for the past couple of years, I'm always impressed at such a young age, the questions that they're able to come up with, how they're able to engage admin, so hopefully we can continue that with them as we go forward, and they will be here next, next month, so thank you. That ends my note.
Thank you, Mrs. King. At this point, I'll ask the Superintendent, or is it your?
Ah, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate that. I'm not going to steal her thunder, but I did want to just preview, very excited to announce that we did hold our first staff wellness fair on January tenth. Ms. Healy is going to be giving you more detail on that, but as you know, one of our strategic, one of the pillars of part of our strategic plan, our Student Success Plan, is human capital, and we really have a focus this year on promoting staff wellness, and so this was an idea raised early on in the year, and Ms. Healy and her department organized such a great event for our staff, very well received, but I know she's going to share more information, but I did want to just acknowledge her and our department and all those that were involved, and what a great day it was, so thank you, Ms. Healy, to you and your team and everyone that was involved. I know Ms. Westell is coming down in a minute. I did want to just give a quick update on our new students that have enrolled in the district through the Emergency Assistance Program through the state. It has been nothing but a positive experience thus far, and I wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank all those families that reached out for offers of bare necessities, winter coats, hats, gloves, food, whatever these families may need, truly appreciate that, and I wanted to just take that opportunity, take this opportunity to acknowledge them. As I said, we approximately, welcome approximately twenty-eight students, K through twelve, so we really, we did not see a significant increase in any one grade level, any one classroom, so we really, it's been such a positive experience. Many of the administrative teams, central office in the buildings, have spent quite a bit of time over at the Home to Suites, getting to know the students, getting to know the families. It's actually somewhat heartening when you walk through and you get a, you know, the eyes get wide, you get a smile from one of the families that recognizes you in the lobby, so it's, it's great. And just so impressed with our students, and obviously they've come from near and far, and their journey is something that I could not imagine, but in talking with one of our high school students, he actually speaks four languages. I, you know, I struggle to get through one some days, so, you know, the fact that he is able to learn and understand and speak four languages is just so impressive, and we're finding that with, with the majority of these students. They're just, they're really enhancing the school system and all the students that, that are here, so just, it's, it's been great thus far. But I did want to invite Ms. Westell down. As you know, the other principals have come before you to share their school improvement plans. Each school is required, as, as part of national law, to have a school improvement plan and establish a school improvement council. I've asked the principals to submit those plans to me, to Mrs. Barry, and we reviewed them and approved them, but obviously as part of our process, it's also important that you, as a school committee, are informed of what the schools have planned. So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Westell to share her school improvement plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee and Superintendent Powers, thank you for having me here this evening. The elementary, Merrill Elementary School Improvement Plan is aligned with the district's Student Success Plan, and this plan was developed in collaboration with school administrators, staff, and families. At this time, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the Merrill School Council who assisted in the creation of this plan. That would be Mrs. Colleen Swart, Mrs. Katrina Fisher, Mrs. Ellen Fritz, Mrs. Cassandra Begalia, and Mr. Craig Poole. As you know, the district's Student Success Plan, which drives our school improvement plans, is based upon four pillars: safety supported schools, curriculum instruction and assessment, operations, and human capital. Although we have multiple school-based actions items built into this plan, I would like to highlight several of our action items at this time. Under safety supported schools, we are focused on implementing weekly grade-level social, emotional lessons facilitated by our school psychologists and school adjustment counselors. These lessons foster student learning of age-appropriate social skills in social settings. Under curriculum instruction and assessment, we are focused on conducting weekly grade-level common planning time meetings for both kindergarten and grade one. These meetings are facilitated by our Title I coach and math coach, and this strengthens the implementation of our new curriculum and promotes teacher collaboration. Under operations, we are focused on advocating for the need of touch-screen Chromebooks for our, our students in the library. Under human capital, we are focused on developing wellness opportunities to, for our staff through our Wellness Committee. These are several of our highlights, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Westell. Second, please.
I would just like to say, to echo Mr. Powers, is I know, I think that Town Rainham has done things, but there are two particular moms in Rainham that have done a lot of collecting of items for families over at Home to Suites. If people would like more information, I'm happy to connect them, to the two mothers that happen to be doing a lot of work around this, I'm happy to connect them if you want more information. I think yesterday dropped, or today, they dropped off enough stuff to fill the whole National Guard's office full of stuff, and my understanding right now is some of the top items they're looking for is baby webs actually right now. Next, we'll move on to special education protocols. Mrs. King?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee and Superintendent Powers, thank you for having me. Something that is required of all school districts is to have a policy and procedural manual for the Special Education Department. We've updated our existing manual since it hadn't been updated for several years. There weren't many changes to the actual content, but instead, the goal was to ensure that our policies match the most current laws and regulations. An overview of some, some of the changes that were made were the removal of the preschool handbook, because once that is revised and updated, that will be a separate document. Also, we created an appendix section in which, which includes several documents that are included in the special education process. The purpose for this is for families to be able to preview and become familiar with all of those documents. It is important for our department and district that families are a part of the special education process, and that we want them to be able to, we want to be able to provide resources like these to be able to support their involvement. Our legal counsel has reviewed this document, and it will be submitted to Desi as well as posted on our website under the Special Education section. Do you have any questions?
I know this is a labor kind of blow, if you can call it that, every last couple months, you work very hard. It's been something that I know myself and others have advocated for a few years to get updated. My question is, is will there be, I know it'll be posted on our website, to Desi, and it's very, a lot of it's driven from federal regulations and state regulations of what is in there. Will there be some process to, to issue it or to families and let them see the updated version?
Yes, so we would like to use our CPAC forum to be able to generate conversations around it, and if families want to, want to provide feedback or any type of question and answer, just to go over, because it is a very comprehensive manual, and I know people don't necessarily have time to sit and read a hundred and twenty-three pages, but we want to make sure that families are understanding where to look if they have questions about the policies and procedures, so that, that CPAC forum is a great forum to be able to do that.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. King.
Thank you, Mrs. Westell.
Policies of the new students. Or budget, oh, sorry, I was skipping ahead, sorry. Sorry, Mrs. King, I was just moving along. I was like, all wants to skip budget, sorry.
This is Mrs. King's night, it's a budget night.
No, not yet, after we hear from Mr. Powers. Thank you, Madam Chair. On Monday, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Budget Subcommittee met at five thirty P M. in the Superintendent's Conference Room. In attendance were Mrs. Conrad Laberinto, Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. Martelli, Superintendent Powers, Assistant Superintendent Barry, Director of Business Services, Ms. Babelola, Treasurer, Ms. Rubashow, Base Program Director, Ms. Bell, our Recording Secretary, Mrs. McDougall, and myself. We also had one community member in attendance. The first discussion we had was regarding the base program. As you know, this has been something that we've had many discussions for the past several months on. The base program is a revolving account, and it is not self-funding at this moment. We are running in the red currently every month. So we had a long discussion at the January Subcommittee meeting. Mr. Powers and Ms. Bell presented us the current status of the program, and we reviewed documents and updates regarding staffing, current registration numbers, and budget tracking. One of the issues we are running into is the number is so fluid regarding how many people are there on a weekly and monthly basis. So we discussed several options, such as instituting a registration fee for summer program and, and ongoing for next school year. We also discussed further strategies such as raising prices and/or ending programs in locations that are not being utilized to capacity, such as the BMS program. At the end of our discussion, we did put on the floor a motion to institute the twenty-five dollar fee for student registrations to be commenced starting with summer program. I then requested further documentation from Ms. Bell and indicated I would also speak to Ms. McCray at Rainham Park and Rec. so we can see what his current pricing is, so we can potentially try and align with that. Our prices are currently very, very low. We don't need the program to be a revenue source, but we definitely need it to be self-funded and not to be running in red. So I did get that information from Mr. McCray actually this week, and we have further documents from Ms. Bell, so I had also set up that meeting that Mr. Fitzgibbons and I would meet separately to try and bring a recommendation to the Subcommittee to try and get a motion on the floor that is not raising the prices to an exorbitant amount, that parents would be, not be able to afford, but that the program is not running in a deficit. So we are working on that part of it to bring to our February Subcommittee meeting. I'm going to reach out, and Mr. Fitzgibbons and I, and Mrs. Bell, and Mr. Powers are going to meet before the next meeting. But we did end with the twenty-five dollar fee registration, at the very least, for right now to be instituted, and the rest will try and come as a package to the next full meeting, once we get through Subcommittee, with some sort of recommendation regarding pricing structure. According to Madam Chair, as was the recommendation of the Budget Subcommittee, at this time, it would make a motion to institute a twenty-five dollar registration fee per student for the base summer program.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mrs. King, seconded by Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
If Madam Chair asks the question. So this registration fee would be for the summer with a family who puts their child in base in the summer and then in the fall, twenty-five dollars for the fall as well?
Correct, it would be separate.
Okay.
We're going to try and iron out all other details for next month. We kind of get down every month, because up until now, the numbers were still so fluid, people were still registering, but I don't want to put it up anymore, it's already January now, and I don't want to go into another school year, because we're having to fund it out of the operational rating.
And we want families to have enough time to plan for that fee.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to spring it on them, but we also, you know, we can't run a program that's not funding itself.
And also, I'm sorry, Rainham Park and Rec. does have a registration fee as well. So we want to kind of keep it in line with what they're doing.
Yeah.
I, I'd just like to say, I appreciate the hard work that Mrs. King has put in and look forward to meeting to talk about the appropriate fee structure for base. It, it's really very, very different than the Rainham Park and Rec. model, which is the thing that makes it difficult to understand, but I think we both have the same idea that we're not trying to make a ton of money off of people, we just need enough to make it work and not, not have it be a draw on the operational budget, especially as we go into this coming year, where again, it feels like the towns may not be able to fulfill what we're going to see later tonight, due to their circumstances, which is completely understandable, but we can't, we can't say we need more unless we're keeping our own fiscal house in order, so thank you, Mrs. King.
Thank you, Mrs. King. He and I are going to meet, he's the numbers guy, I'm the organization, organizer.
This is a registration fee like per student, like as a family, they would still have to be like twenty-five per child?
It's per student.
It's per child. And Mrs. King, I would just like to add, is this registration fee, this free standard within the, I say childcare sphere, per child, there's usually a registration fee to help process the paperwork and all of the administration activities that have to go along with registering kids, whether summer camp, whether daycare, whether after-school programs, it's a free standard, and it's per, per child typically. Are there other questions as a student? Which student groups are most likely to use the base program, and are there any equity concerns about access to the program if we raise, add a fee as well as raise the fee?
So do you want to know?
Can I, can I try? I, I think, I think there are avenues that we can access to figure out, you know, certainly, we don't want to turn anyone away for lack of ability to pay, but at the same point in time, we do need to run a program that is at least break even, if not a little bit to the positive every year, so that they can buy new supplies and stuff from that surplus. So that'll be a discussion we can take up with the Superintendent, Ms. Bell, in our conversations, Mrs. King, if you don't mind, and just make sure, you know, anyone who's on a free reduced lunch, et cetera, et cetera, we, we have ways of identifying students in need, and, and make sure that, you know, we're, we're, we're not disadvantaging them, if that's fair, does that feel okay?
No, it does, and as part of these discussions being had, are parents going to be able to lend their thoughts to this decision?
I mean, parents are always welcome to attend any Budget Subcommittee meeting we have, and I know Ms. Bell was getting antsy about the timing of it, because she does not want to wait until the last minute, because parents are already reaching out for summer program, so she definitely wants to get information out to them, so there's a notification to them of like, hey, the fees might change, if that's going to change any, like, impact in any way, and they're always welcome to attend any of our budget meetings as well.
And I would say, is, is there also a welcome to come here and public comment, or commentate on the fees and the impact or, or not, or, or around them? I would just say, historically in the past, I think from talking to Mr. Powers and Mrs. Bell, that there has been at times where they have waived some of the fees, that they think that's something that the base program needs to think about and manage and be conscious of what they're waiving or not waiving, and families that are here, yes, so there are, there are ways to, to waive some fees.
And our emails are always open, find us on the website if you have any issues, be it base or any others, send us emails and let us know what you think. That's very important.
So I just want to follow up on that. So based on what I'm hearing, that we do have parents reaching out, wanting to know if, what's happening with base in the summer, at that point of contact, are they being informed that this is a discussion being had, because parents are really busy, and to your point, they're using base, so their availability to attend a budget meeting that's usually five, five-thirty, or come here, that demographic of parents who are tending to use base may not have the time, so at the time of outreach, are we inviting them into the conversation, saying, I'm so sorry, there's a delay here, but we, we, to get their input, because they're actually self-identifying, they're, it sounds like they're actively reaching out and wanting this information?
So at the January meeting, we did tell Ms. Bell and directed her to let parents know when they're contacting her, that normally around this time, she does start taking registrations for the summer, so she is telling parents, we're, that's on hold right now while we figure out the new pricing structure, if, if we do price that. So she is telling parents that, that I have started to reach out as well.
That's a different question. Informing them and letting them know we're in discussions about the price, price and structure is different than inviting them to speak on that. So is she just giving them notice that this is a discussion that's happening, or inviting them to provide their input?
At this point, it's a notice, and it's still a discussion within Budgets. We have a program that we're running, that's running in a deficit right now, and we have a poor financial outlook for next year potentially, so we definitely have to make a decision. Like Mr. Fitzgibbon said, we're not looking to make money off parents, but we need the program. We've reduced staffing, we've checked staffing levels, potentially we're going to close BMS, since that's not really being utilized, so we're doing everything else we can to make sure that we're not raising it too much, but we also can't run, we can't run a program that's losing money. We did that with Pay to Ride, and we had to totally close that, and that was horrific. So we can't continue for another year to run a program, twenty thousand dollars every month, losing money.
Well, my question wasn't about closing the program, it was about having a conversation with the parents. It was about having a conversation with the parents so that they can contribute to the troubleshooting and even determining what is too much of a fee. How much, so say we save $25 and they're like, we could pay 50. Like, it's just, you know, I'm not promoting or advocating for closing it and disregarding what you're saying. I'm just asking specifically if parents are being invited into the conversations that you've all invested a lot of time in, and I could, I could sense the sense of urgency here. I'm not overstepping that.
So, not at this time, but I can talk to Mrs. Bell, what she thinks is prudent or how she thinks she could potentially go about that. I appreciate that.
So, there's been a motion made on the floor by Mrs. King. I think Ms. Martelli seconded. At this point, we'll take.
Mr. Fitzgibbon.
Or Mr. Fitzgibbon, sorry. Sorry.
No, I'm saying.
I didn't write it down.
I'll take it.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzgibbons. All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed?
I oppose. Without having the parents' input, I'd like to, I mean, not in favor of the $25 registration.
Motion passes. Seconded.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also discussed was the proctor salary scale. Upon prior budget subdiscussions last year and prior to that, Mr. Powers indicated that he would draft a proposed salary scale for the subcommittee to review. As we know, the proctors are not part of any bargaining unit, and therefore they do not get regular raises. The last time that we gave him a raise, I think it was last year, final, and that was the first raise they had gotten in quite a long time until it came to budget sub to discuss. So, as a, as a good faith effort, we had talked about Mr. Powers creating some sort of salary scale, not to make a step and et cetera, kind of bargaining unit type thing, but just a salary scale that HR could give to them and say, this is what the school committee has promised for the next several years of a positive increase over the next X number of years. So, we're not trying to make sure the budget sub is constantly turning over which budget sub might remember, which might not remember. So, they can have that to look forward to. Even though proctors are not part of the bargaining unit, they are a very important part of the district. We put them in many different positions throughout the district, and we're trying to work on retention with all of our staff and try and, you know, make them want to stay here and have something to look forward to. So, I think that's important. I know Mr. Powers has a good grasp of what the budget is going to look like, so hopefully he can put something together that will be within our budget, but also something that we can have for HR to present to potential proctors that might come into the district. So, he's going to work on that, and we will present that after that comes to budget sub. BMS water heater. Mr. Powers indicated that the heat exchanger on a boiler at BMS recently failed. Mr. Kilgore was able to negotiate a rate of $39,000 for a replacement for that heat exchange on the boiler, including the labor. Therefore, that was able to, he was able to cover those costs within the facility's budget. So, no action was taken. That was just an FYI to the budget sub, known about that. Class size discussion. Mr. Fitzgibbons have requested that we put that on the agenda to discuss. As we all know, this has been a topic that we have received many email concerns about. We've had many parents come to committee to discuss or rather to give public comment about. We did have a lengthy discussion about this. With the amount of students that we have at over 5,000 students, to make an impact in class size at this time would be a huge financial impact to the district in excess of $3 billion. So, we really talked about figuring out strategies to provide additional resources to teacher and/or different funding sources. Even if budget was not a restraint, many of our buildings, especially on the Rainham side, are at capacity. So, depending how this frame does go with town elections and town meetings, it was a recommendation that we have serious discussions, especially with the town of Rainham, about the potential of a new building in the near future to start talking about that as a serious Insurance opt-out for custodian. Mr. Powers also brought to attention a custodian who had recently requested an insurance opt-out, which is not, was not during open enrollment. The custodian contract, unlike the REA contract, is silent regarding only allowing it during open enrollment. Mr. Powers and Ms. Babalola indicated that after speaking also with legal counsel, there was no con that they could see of, and it would only be a cost savings to the district. So, they were going to go forward with that and sign an MOU regarding that one custodian that requested it. So, that is something that potentially negotiations should look at with upcoming negotiation contracts as well. No action from the committee was needed. Gilfoyle Crisis Communication. Mr. Powers was presented with a proposal that he received from Gilfoyle Crisis Communication for their services. While he acknowledged their communications would be helpful and have been helpful, the contract was $24,000 per year and would not necessarily be needed on an ongoing basis. They do not have a per case-by-case draft at this time. And we do have, I'm not sure how to pronounce her name, please, Sedorovitz?
Sedorovitz.
It's Sedorovitz, sorry. So, we do have her on staff, which she fulfills that capacity in most cases, so we can revisit that if needed. It was Mr. Powers' recommendation that we do not necessarily need it right now, but we could revisit that in the future if we needed. The subcommittee concurred with that recommendation, and no action was taken. Minutes of December 11th, 2023 were approved. Fiscal '24 budget report, we reviewed, as we do on a monthly basis, the fiscal year 2024 budget with Ms. Babalola. She also, at that time, noted the normal pages in the '24 budget such as special education, electricity and heat, and tuition out of district, which are all lines that we're constantly monitoring. She also gave us a presentation regarding mid-year reviews and transfers for each state function category. We did not take a vote on that as that is a vote at the end of the year, and it is fluid, but she did provide documentation regarding what the mid-year transfers look like, and that was provided in your Google Drive. If anyone wants Ms. Bell to go over those, she can, if you need further information And then fiscal year 2025 budget prep discussion. Mr. Powers presented to the budget sub his tentative fiscal year 2025 budget and his rationale for each slide and what his priorities were. He will be presenting that, so I won't steal his thunder for that as well.
You're worth the welcome, Mrs. King.
So, following this presentation, once.
Everyone understand, this is Mr. Powers' budget.
It is until the end of the, until the end. Once that is approved, it will come back to budget sub for revisions and edits, and will be presented to the public at the public hearing on March 13th, and then at the full committee on March 27th, and then sent to the towns for their votes following that. The last thing we did have was Ms. Robichaud presented, she had had questions regarding an audit and some of the banks that do not currently have DIP insurance. She was working with several of the banks to sweep their accounts and invest in other banks that are insured with DIP insurance. One of those specifically she is going to use is Eastern Bank. That was not required, but would be an added safety measure. At this time, the funds at Eastern Bank have an interest rate of 3.25. If we allow them to sweep the account and invest in banks that have DIP insurance, they will give us 85% interest rates. Ms. Robichaud has those particulars in writing, and we'll move forward with that. No action was taken as this was just an FYI to the committee. And that concludes my budget subcommittee report.
Thank you, Mrs. King.
Another question?
Yes.
Is our FY 2023 audit completed yet?
That it's completed, but we're just waiting for the auditor to send us the final.
The draft is available.
I'd like to see the draft if that's not too much trouble.
Any other questions for Mrs. King? Thank you, Mrs. King. Now, Mr. Dan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The policy subcommittee met on January 17th, 5:30 in the superintendent's conference room, light agenda this month. We took a look at policy JLCD, medication administration policy. This was brought towards us by Ms. Claire Grenon, the nurse leader, who was in attendance as well as Mr. Powers, as well as Ms. Ellen Sedorovitz. Specifically, Ms. Grenon spoke to what changed, hadn't been changed at some time, and the revisions, first thing, and which was imperative, she said, was about the FDA-approved drugs as more and more physicians are starting to prescribe some medications that are not federally approved. And this policy that was drafted reflects the changes to make sure that it clearly states at the top that it's, we will allow FDA-approved drugs to be administered. Ms. Grenon also discussed about the administration portion, specifically about having parents bring the medications to the schools instead of coming, allowing the kids to transport them via buses. There's clear language now there as well. While we do encourage some students to do self-serve, you know, language has been added in to show what we allow as well to have regard. Ms. Grenon did a great job in discussing and answering all our questions about who, how that decision is made about if a student can self-administer, what classes of students such as individuals with diabetes, mostly at the high school level where they've been taught, or they've had years of this, and that goes into consideration. And, you know, obviously, we wanted to make sure that this complied with state and federal guidelines. And that, with that, I would like to make a motion to weigh the first reading out loud of policy JLCD, medication policy.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Dan Marino to weigh the first reading of JLCD, and second by Mr. Don. Is there any discussion? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Dan Marino, if parents have concerns about this, they still have an opportunity before our next meeting to reach out to the policy committee and express their concerns and issues.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Dan Marino, is, what's it, is policy, most of it, if you will, dictated by federal government and the state and state?
From Ms. Grenon's report to us, yes.
Thank you.
So, we can't change very much.
Currently.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And that concludes my report for the month.
Mr. Don. Mrs. King.
No, Ms. Mainville.
Oh. And, oh, sorry. Ms. Mainville.
This month.
Community liaison. Pardon?
Sorry, community liaison report.
Okay. This month, I received communication via office hours and email from a total of three parents, one community and one community member. And I wanted to do a disclaimer here. Thanks to Laura's feedback and guidance, one, we've saved you a lot of reading, condensed it, but I wanted to emphasize that the comments here are not community-wide. They are based on one individual parent experience, and the purpose, as I understand it, of the community liaison report is to bring to your attention what I'm hearing in the community. So, wanted to give that disclaimer. I also invite you all to provide your own feedback as well. I want this report to be helpful and useful, and so just as Laura has done, I welcome everyone to kind of give you feedback and let me know what more, what less you'd like to say on that. So, one parent of a child at the Williams School expressed the following concerns. They indicated that their experience may have been influenced by their status as a new member in the Bridgewater community versus a longtime resident who has personal connections with parent groups, coaches, and teachers. This conversation was an hour-long conversation, and so as you will see in my report, I created some categories just for easier reading. They provided feedback on the parent council, the sports program, parent and family engagement, student safety, curriculum, student achievement, staffing, and middle school lunches. I won't go through that all right now. It's all there, but I wanted to kind of highlight what the categories are. I also received, had a conversation with one parent who expressed concerns about the safety of the new school. They indicated concerns about the roof leaking during periods of heavy rain and impacted, and its impact on the functionality of elevators. Parent from Latin Liberty expressed concern about their child's teacher using the word lazy. They believe it's inappropriate and harmful, especially for students with disabilities. They urged the district to investigate and consider staff training on special education needs. Parent was guided to the communication chain and encouraged to have a face-to-face conversation with the teacher. One community member requested a copy of the K-10 PE curriculum and expressed frustration by what they believe is a lack of concrete document. I encouraged them to reach out to Mrs. Barry, which they did, and they provided some high-level feedback here. They highlighted the need for curriculum verification and re-level progression, questioned how standards compliance is ensured without a central document, expressed interest in state-provided summer workshops on curriculum implementation, and offered enthusiasm for their invitation to participate in future ones of theirs. As always, I do invite these parents and community members to follow the community communication chain. As you'll see in my report, I provide the initials of those who are okay, and with sharing what they have said, and then indicate those who wanted to remain anonymous. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Mainville. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I've had multiple conversations with mainly parents, but some grandparents as well, around class size. So, as we've heard earlier in the meeting, I don't need to belabor the point that, you know, it's a very, very hot topic and a very important issue to those who have students in the district, as it is obviously to this committee. And I know we're all committed to do our best to ensure appropriate class sizes within the resources we have. And then I believe I may have spoken to the same person as Ms. Mainville around the health and physical education, policies and curriculum, and so on and so forth. And I'd just add that, you know, it feels like, and I, you know, that we want to have a driving force, is this person's thought, throughout the district on how we do health and physical education, much like we do with an English curriculum or a math curriculum, and what we hear also from those parents passionate about music, to have a driving force behind the music curriculum. Again, all subject to resources. So, I just want to emphasize what Ms. Mainville said there. Those were the big things I heard this past month.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Now, Ms. King.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the school committee and Superintendent Powers.
I'm going to do my personality report. The dates are from December ninth, twenty-three through January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four. In the past month, we had three resignations, eight new hires, one rehire, and two reassignments.
If anyone has any questions? Question, your presentation?
I have two questions. Were the reassignments voluntary?
Yes.
Okay. And my second question was that during a previous school committee meeting, a couple of the school committee members expressed that their concerns about using teacher demographics to trap district progress towards our goal of diversifying staff. Do you have any suggestions on another way to track or progress towards diversifying our staff?
Well, I have suggestions. We are working actually on some initiatives right now. We are signed up for three different job fairs right now to try to diversify our staff. So I have Stonewall College coming up in February. And then the Merck Job Fair, that's at U. That's in April. And then the local B S U one. They're also looking for others that may be coming around to try to diversify staff from all across the state as well. That's right now what we're doing. So I'm talking with my team and with the superintendent, but also doing a fair writing, for B I, right writing B I, to try to have students who are maybe students at B S U or other places that are close to Bridgewater, see what we're all about right there in one of our buildings. So that's something I'm thinking about right now.
So that's amazing. It sounds like you're going to be on the road quite a bit.
I'm excited for that.
How will you track progress? If we're now going to look at the demographic shift, how will we show that those steps that you've taken and invested your time and energy into has yielded positive results if we don't look at the demographics?
So, I mean, while we're looking at just reaching out to the different populations at these different job fairs, you know, we're doing what we did when we were, you know, signing my jobs, getting those resumes, outreaching to everyone that we meet, staying connected, offering assistance for, you know, if we've got positions, showing them where our websites are, giving them a Q and A post to be taken back. You know, we have our website that we can do some data, but it's not, but we can do some analytics on our staffing. But it's not, you know, it's not full. So it's hard to tell. But we're, you know, we keep reaching out and participating in different events that we can and trying to get on the, I'm going to forget the acronym right now, but MPDE. We're not accepting applications right now to be part of that group. So I'm really pushing for that for next year. And now, I'm going to talk about the wellness fair. So on January tenth, during the early release time, the district held its first staff wellness fair. As a committee, you know that one of our four pillars of our student success plan is focused on human capital. One focus area within the pillar is promoting staff wellness and opportunities across the district, so initiative across the district. This event allowed us to do just that. We're able to recognize the efforts of our amazing staff by providing optional wellness experiences and activities for their enjoyment. By offering this specific event during the in-service, it allowed a large number of staff to participate in the opportunity. There are plenty of activities and classes for staff to participate in. Some of these activities and classes included mini C T R and first date training, mindfulness and meditation, a guided run and a guided walk, chair massages and path therapy, brought to us by our community partner, Plymouth County K nine. That was probably one of my favorites. Everyone's, everyone's a fan of that. Other partnerships to thank for their involvement included Trotwell's, Bridgewater Fire Department, Rainham Fire Department, Harbor Hill from Healthcare and their Living Well Division, Plymouth County Retirement, Altus Dental, Foster Mutual, Horace Mann, Equitable, L P L Financial, Physical Therapy U, Y M C A, A S D Fit, and The Boundless Bean. Of course, we couldn't do any of this without our amazing staff behind the scenes and those who were there that day to help volunteer the event. The feedback has been overwhelmingly positive and we're really looking forward to the next one we can have. You know, any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I would just like to thank you, Mrs. Hugill, and all of the staff that brought this to the staff at the district. I've heard from different staff how positive it was and what a great event it was. And I just, I think everybody and their hard work in pulling this together for the staff.
I just want to reiterate that. I've heard from several staff members that they've really enjoyed it. And I think focusing on that is just as important as it could be for Google training or some curriculum training. If the staff is feeling taken care of, there may be more out to be. So I think that was really good.
I did see some pictures online, right? I think they were shared on the district page. It looked like a good time. I was definitely like the dog sees you. How often are you guys looking? Like, is this like a once-a-year type thing? Multiple times a year or?
I think one time a year for a big event like that. I'm, you know, working with some folks at Central Office to send out a survey to see what people are looking for. Personally, I love camaraderie after-work hours. I would love to see some things happen, like walking club. You know, we could get some teams together for maybe some friendly kickball or something like that. If that's what the staff wants, I'll do whatever the staff wants. Happy to get behind what they would like.
I can see that being really impressive. So it's so wonderful to hear of the positive feedback. It must sound like the big event that will continue. In addition to the kind of verbal feedback, was there any kind of metrics or survey or anything?
We're working on it right now to go out the survey to get some idea of what people would like or if they didn't choose to attend, what they chose to do with their time instead. A lot of, you know, people came and went. And I did have a registration table. So I had about two hundred people registered that were in the building that day for the event. I did have a preregistration, kind of, just to see what people would be interested in. So I knew that the numbers were going to be higher than I kind of expected for the first one. I think that, you know, timing for the next one, I tried to extend it a little bit on the other end if possible. So those little things like that, I think we could tweak and make it a lot better. But it was really, I think for the people who came out and really had had a time to go through and maybe do an event, do the meditation and mindfulness, that was a real big draw. And that was, I'm not sure how many people ended up going to it, but I saw a lot of people bring in their Go Grads and really like looking forward to that. And even the guided run and walk had a lot of people and had some great support there that between admin staff and staff from Central Office who came out and helped. So it was really a lot of fun. I think everyone had a good time. But I think just keep the momentum going and showing that, you know, that wellness matters to all of us. Because it's not just the words and it's not just under our pillar, but it really is something that's meaningful to everyone.
So if I'm carrying correctly, you're measuring the success of the event by the attendance of, so there were different stations and depending on the volume of folks that took advantage of that, that will help you to understand what was successful and maybe help you inform what you're going for the next time?
Yes, I think, just seeing what, maybe we missed something. So that will be one of the questions. There was something there that, something that you didn't see that you would like. All the people that I mentioned, all those partnerships, every single one of them were there at our event, at their tables. A lot of them donated raffle prizes. They told me, these, our partners told me this is the best event they've ever been to. So for, to hear that from someone who's been to many wellness fairs was like, I've been a bit happier to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will ask Mr. Powers to give his presentation on the budget. If we can, maybe the first one and move to the audience.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the School Committee, I am here tonight to present the fiscal year twenty-five preliminary budget. I did want to start by thanking the administrative team that's here. I see we are members of the community as well. So thank you for attending. And lastly, I'd like to recognize and acknowledge our town officials from both the town of Bridgewater and Rainham. Your presence here obviously communicates that you are a strong partner and ally to the district and that you are invested in the success of our students. So thank you, I truly appreciate it. Just to give you a quick overview of what we're going to discuss tonight, obviously, I want to provide you with some context on the district, who we are, what we're about, talk a little bit about the budget process, how the budget process, the timeline of the budget process and how the budget is actually developed. Obviously, we'll dive into the FY twenty-five preliminary budget, discuss next steps, and then end with some acknowledgements and certainly open it up to questions. So the district, just to give a quick overview of the district, as you know, we have eight schools and seven school buildings serving, based on our October one numbers, five thousand five hundred eighty-two students in pre-K through twelve plus. We are the second-largest regional school district in the Commonwealth. I think that's something that, obviously, we take great pride in. But it's significant as well. You think of being the second-largest regional school district across the state, that's no small, no small feat. I did provide a quick overview and a snapshot of the district and the demographics and the makeup of our students. You can see on the left-hand side, obviously, the various categories there and then, obviously, the subgroups of our students on the right. I do think it's important to note that, you know, when you look back to, say, even FY twenty-four, obviously, majority of those categories have increased. You know, the percentage of students that, you know, for example, are first language, not English, were up to six point six percent this year. Last year was six point one. When you look at five years ago, we were at two point seven percent. So again, significant increases. When you look at our students with disabilities, last year we were at nineteen point one. Now we're at nineteen point nine. Five years ago, we were at sixteen point two percent. When you look at the demographics of our district, African-American, you can see that we're at roughly eleven, a little over eleven percent. Last year, we were at ten point three. And five years ago, we were at five point two percent. So the district is always changing and evolving, which I think is great. Anytime our demographics change, I think it's an opportunity for us to celebrate and recognize that our times are changing and our students are changing. And that's a good thing. But you can see here, obviously, the different categories. And I think you understand by now, but certainly happened to give a quick overview. When we look at some of these different categories, such as first language, not English, I think that's, you know, fairly self-explanatory. English, so a family has, you know, identified that their first language primarily spoken home is not English. English language learner, so a student that has been identified requiring additional support with English language acquisition. Obviously, students with disabilities, so our students that have any type of physical cognitive disability and then are on an I U P. High needs, the high needs category is really a combination of those different subgroups. So looking at our English language learners, our students with disabilities, and then our low-income students. Our low-income, if you've been around and kind of seen different budget presentations, is, it's not fairly new, but it's actually been brought back. The state had originally classified students as low-income and then switched to economically disadvantaged. And now they're categorizing students again as low-income. This is an overview of our enrollment trends. You can see, obviously, again, you know, I tried to go, even the last few years, you can see our enrollment continues to increase. And I think that's also important to note when you actually, you know, speak to other districts across the state or certainly you see this on the news. Some districts are experiencing enrollment trends going in the other direction, that they're actually decreasing enrollment. When we came out of COVID, we actually saw just the opposite of that, that our enrollment had started to increase. And here it is. So you can see, so you can see the blue, the dark blue bar, that represents our student population. The light blue section of the bar represents our staffing. And then, obviously, I included also the percentage of our high-needs students, which I just spoke to you of. Just some changes to point out, you can see when we go back to, say, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, you know, our high-needs population was at twenty-nine percent of our students, overall student population. You can see we're now at forty percent. So again, you know, as those needs increase, certainly comes with that additional support that sometimes, sometimes is needed. Staffing, you can see, obviously, we've added staff over the years. When I look back historically, I know this question came up in terms of, you know, just in the past, has staff been higher, has staff been lower? I would say staff was pretty consistent around the three hundred and thirty number. I know there were certainly years where it was a little bit less, especially the years that we had layoffs. But it's held pretty consistent for the fact around three twenty-five to three thirty. You can obviously see back in fiscal year twenty-three, due to the good financial state of both the states, both the state and the towns, we were able to add additional positions. That was obviously the first year of the Student Opportunity Act, which resulted in additional funding for districts across the state. So we were able to reap those benefits and add additional staff from fiscal year twenty-two. We've obviously been able to maintain that staff for this year as well. I do want to point out, though, this number, the five thousand five hundred eighty-two number is based on our October one enrollment. And actually, in speaking with Meg about our recent enrollment, when you look even from October one until now, when I was working on preparation and this number probably hasn't even gone up, we've actually had an increase of ninety-eight students just from October one until now. When you think of ninety-eight students, you know, that's really the equivalent When you think of 98 students, you know, that's really the equivalent of almost four classrooms. We haven't added any additional staff this time. This is, you know, really who we are and what we're about. Obviously, you can see our mission, and you've heard me say this several times over and over again. We're all about excellence in education for all. We don't just talk it, I believe we walk it, and everything that we do is based on that. You can see our vision for our students and for our district, and then, obviously, our equity statement, the fact that we are really committed to providing equitable opportunities to our students throughout the district and, obviously, to our families as well. This budget, obviously FY '25 budget and all previous budgets, and really, everything we do here in the district is based on our student success plan, which is our strategic plan. The strategic plan or the student success plan is based on the Planning for Success Model that has been published by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We actually started transforming into the Student Success Plan five years ago, or really, six years ago, I guess, at this time when we were developing it. We did have a consultant from DESI come in, walk us through this process, and I think it's been very beneficial for us to have one clear succinct plan. So, as you have heard already, the plan is based on four pillars, safe and supportive schools, so making sure that our students are just physically safe at school, but also socially, emotionally safe. Obviously, curriculum, instruction, and technology and assessment, that's everything that we're about, right? That's what drives us, that's really why we're here, to provide an education to our students. Obviously, operations, you know, having great facilities, technology, budgetary systems, and you've already heard about human capital. It really is important to invest in the people that we have, our staff, our great staff, and obviously, the staff that we hope to bring in. Just to give you a quick overview of the budget process, we actually started somewhat earlier this year than normal. Ms. Babalola and I actually talked to our administrative team this summer in August. We typically don't start until September, October, but we really wanted to have an initial conversation with our administrative team as early as possible. That's kind of the first time we've come together. So, we really started talking about what FY '25 may look like, and so, I think, you know, starting that early certainly behooves us. But obviously, here we are in January, so here I am to present the preliminary budget to the school committee, to the community. Then, we'll transition over to March, where there'll be a public hearing in the beginning of March, and then the school committee later that month will vote to adopt the FY '25 budget. And then, from there, obviously, the budget will be sent to the towns later on in the spring in May, where the Bridgewater Town Council and then the Rainham Town Meeting will vote to approve funding for the school budget for FY '25. And shortly thereafter, we'll begin the process all over again. So, just wanted to give a quick overview, and I certainly won't spend too much time unless there's questions on this, about the budget process and how the budget is really going to develop. You've heard, and you'll continue to hear about Chapter 70 funding. Chapter 70 is really the main funding mechanism from the Commonwealth. It's their program for ensuring adequate and equitable pre-K through 12 educational funding. It determines an adequate spending level for each school district, which is also referred to as the foundation budget. It determines an adequate spending level, I'm sorry, it then uses each community's property values and residents' incomes to determine how much of the foundation budget should be funded from local property taxes, and then Chapter 70 state aid makes up the difference. So, you have the foundation budget, they determine what the communities can contribute, and then the state makes up the difference. So, obviously, that foundation budget is key for us to really know what is expected, not just of the district but of the towns, and what we can then expect from the state for funding. You know, obviously, you can see there that, you know, Chapter 70 is our main funding source. Chapter 71 is also another funding source from the state, that's our transportation reimbursement. And that varies from year to year in terms of what we can expect for transportation reimbursement. Regional transportation, at one time was promised about 100% reimbursement. I don't think we've ever actually ever seen that. Some years, it's been more, last couple of years, we've teed it around 90%. This past year is about 79%, and then before that, anywhere from the 60s to 70s to little 80s. Obviously, local contributions, that's the towns, what they're contributing to the budget. And that, you know, there's a minimum number established by the state that both towns have to contribute. I do want to point out and obviously recognize and thank the towns. They actually always, have always contributed over what the required amount is, and I think that's important to note, and, you know, ensure that they're committed to the district and supporting us as much as possible. And then, obviously, the district contributes as well, based on fees that we're able to generate through rental of our facilities, activities, athletics. We obviously receive Medicaid reimbursement, any type of interest earned on accounts. You've heard, you know, about this robo-show, investing our money in different bank accounts. Obviously, miscellaneous receipts, if we, you know, an item that was originally supposed to cost X amount, it turns out it was less, but they were reimbursed. Circuit breaker reimbursements for special education costs. And then, we also use funds from what we refer to as E and D or excess and.
You said you were entertaining questions from that side?
I can take questions now, or if you want, until the end?
It's up to you. What would you prefer?
A lot of them wait at the end.
Fine, okay.
We'll go back.
So, this is just a kind of a historical snapshot of our funding over the last few years. You can see, obviously, it breaks down, Chapter 70, Chapter 71, what the contributions from the town of Bridgewater have been, the town of Rainham, and then the district, to give you a subtotal of our operating costs, and then, obviously, to show historically what we've, you know, sent or spent on capital and debt, and then the total budgets as well. And obviously, as I shared, you know, certainly, both towns have contributed more than the required amount, which we're grateful for. We have benefited the last couple of years from Chapter 70, increases in Chapter 70 through the Student Opportunity Act, anywhere from, you know, 12 to 18% increases in Chapter 70. When you look over the four-year period, approximately, we received about a 36% increase in Chapter 70, which is significant. Numbers were released early today. I don't think we're going to be in such, receive such a beneficial amount that we have in the past. Governor shared that she anticipated about a 4% increase in Chapter 70 funding overall. When we look at early numbers from the state, we're at about a 1.7% increase over the last year. But as I said, those numbers were released this afternoon, so we really haven't reflected any of those amounts in the foundation course, which obviously, we'll once we have a chance to digest all of that. So, the preliminary budget is, obviously, based on our student success plan. We have asked, or I've asked all building and district administrators to propose personnel goods and services that support our student success plan and our path to excellence. And obviously, this budget is reflective of our collective commitment to, for excellence in education for all students. Obviously, going into this, we knew that we wasn't likely wouldn't have our most up-to-date information in terms of funding. As I stated, we do have that information for this afternoon. I think it's important to note, though, that, you know, when we look at our student success plan, obviously, it's a five-year plan. The number that you'll see coming up is really reflective of that five years. So, it's, you know, in some cases, maybe a significant increase, but it really is showing what we need in order to fulfill our student success plan. If that happens in one year, that's great. If it happens over the course of the next five years, so be it. But I think it gives a snapshot to both communities and the community at large really what we need. So, when we do talk about budget, the budget is developed and presented tonight by series. So, you can see on the left-hand column of the, what we refer to as the 1,000 series, the 2,000 series, the 3,000 series, and so forth. I do want to point out, I did not, well, I intentionally skipped 6,000, I didn't leave it off. We actually don't have any categories of the 6,000. 6,000 is community services, so we would provide community services, such as health services to the community. I know some, you know, districts offer dental clinics, health clinics, you know, so those types of things, civic activity, recreation activities provided by the district. That would be in the 6,000 series, because we don't do that. Obviously, we don't include that in our budget. But just to give you a quick overview, you can see, and I won't read each one, you can see it up there, really what each category consists of. So, administration, if we think of it overall, really a central office, superintendent's office, the business office, IT. Instructional services, that's the backbone of the district. So, that is all of our supplies and materials, instructional materials, and then, obviously, the majority of our teaching and learning staff. 3,000 series of the school services, transportation is factored into that, nursing department as well, food services, athletics, extracurriculars, and so forth. Operations and maintenance, I think, again, that's self-explanatory, our facilities and maintenance and such. Fixed costs, that's obviously health insurance for active and retired. Capital, as you can imagine, those are capital expenses for purchasing goods or equipment, any type of large purchase, whether it be land, materials, technology, and such. And then, obviously, debt for time and services, any type of construction-related remodeling, new construction, purchase of land, anything that we've had to actually borrow for, that would fall into that category. And then, programs in other schools, that's related to, obviously, our tuitions with other schools, special education tuition for district students, residential, and such. So, what you'll see here is, obviously, the budget presented by categories. Now, I'll go into more detail by category in the next few slides. You can see in overall how it compares, obviously, in the right-hand, far-right-hand column, you see FY '25 initial, so that is our preliminary budget. That is reflective of all of the personnel goods and services that we asked our building and district administrators to submit. You can see what was approved in FY '24, FY '23, just to have a sense of, you know, where we're at. But again, I'll go into greater detail. Just to kind of give you a quick overview, this is roughly a, you know, 16% increase from last year. When we look back to the last few years, FY '24 is 5.7% increase in the year before, and FY '23 was a 7.4% increase from the year before. When you look at operational expenses, obviously, overall, the total amount at the bottom, total budget, similar numbers but slightly different, about a 15% increase, 5.6 and 6.7. When you look at, you know, really what makes up the majority of our budget, as you can imagine, being a very personnel-driven organization, it's salaries. So, really, when we look at our operational budget, about 75% of our budget is made up of salaries, not just teacher salaries, but any salary, whether it be an administrator, central office, school personnel, any salary that we pay out, that comes for about 75% of our budget. So, I just wanted to kind of go by series and show you really what the difference is. So, what I've tried to do is show you from FY '25 initial compared to FY '24 approved in each one of these categories. So, you can see for 1,000 series, administration, again, looking at central office, the difference, superintendent's office, business office, and IT. Obviously, we've increased our budget by approximately $145,000. You can see, we did propose one additional human resources department, specifically tied to our human capital pillar, and we obviously increased our technology infrastructure by approximately $100,000. So, you have an understanding there of why that differs. The 2,000 series, obviously, instructional services, as I've shared with you, this is where the majority of our expenses do come from. You can see that we have increased, approach the budget, we're increasing about $8 million. What factors into that $8 million? Obviously, any type of contractual obligations that we have to budget for. So, if, you know, obviously, we have four different unions, we have to make sure that any type of pay increase is calculated in the budget or potential future pay increases are calculated in, so we do those contractual obligations. If you remember, the original budget that was proposed for FY '24 had to be reduced, so we had to, this budget is reflective of restoring about $1 million that we had cut from originally FY '24 to get to the necessary number. So, this is reflective of bringing that $1 million worth of supplies and material back. So, curriculum resources, and then everyday resources, whether it be paper, pencils, and so forth. Obviously, professional development and training. You've heard, obviously, we have a strong commitment to our staff, who want to make sure that we're providing every opportunity for professional development and training. Continue to purchase high-quality instructional materials. Thankfully, the school committee and the towns, through their authority in the state, we've been able to add high-quality instructional materials across the district, and we continue to do so. We really kind of started the last couple of years looking at, really, the middle grades, and now we've started to expand in either direction. High school's started to roll out some new curriculum materials this year. We hope to be able to do additional materials at the high school for next year. And then, obviously, you know, we continue to roll out new programming at the elementary level, working our way down. Obviously, as you know, the district has rolled out a one-to-one Chromebook program. So, again, we have to, you know, replenish those Chromebooks each year. I know Mr. Schatz has done an amazing job of trying to secure grant funding when possible to try to offset the operational budget, so that we don't have to absorb all those costs. But when we're looking at budgeting for Chromebooks, you know, we typically look at anywhere from 300 to 350,000 per year, just to be able to replace, as you know, when students come in freshman year at the high school, they receive a Chromebook. When students enter fifth grade, they receive a Chromebook to use the next four years. And then, we obviously want to be able to replace our Chromebooks at the elementary level. We have cards for every other classroom that they share. Chromebooks, as great as they are, they do have somewhat of a shelf life. I know Mr. Schatz tries to typically anticipate about a, you know, three to five-year shelf life, five kind of being on the high end, where many of those programs or the Chromebooks won't handle the updates that are necessary. We find that especially at the high school, middle school level, and even elementary with MCAS testing. Every time the state, the test NAP system that we use for MCAS, every time they release an update, we have to make sure that the Chromebooks that we're currently using can actually handle those updates. And then, what you'll see, obviously, the biggest increase here is additional positions. And through our district and building administrators, we have proposed 60 additional positions for approximately $4.2 million. And I'm going to kind of go over what those positions are, just so you have a sense. You can obviously see right here how I tried to set this up, is what the positions were that are being requested or proposed, the alignment with the student success plan, and then, were these positions previously requested in a prior budget. So, we'll start with our interventionists. We have, as you know, currently have interventionists in the district. However, they are funded through ESER, our ESER grants, currently, right now, through ESER III. And unfortunately, ESER III and all of the COVID-related funding is finishing up at the end of this year. It expires in September, but we certainly wouldn't, you know, wait until then. But so, we do have several of these positions that are being funded by ESER grant funding, and we've come to realize that these positions are really valuable to us, and we'd love to be able to not just keep what we have, but also increase the number of interventionists that we have. So, we're looking at approximately 13 interventionists. Really, every school would have at least one, if not more, depending on enrollment. And again, I think if you were to ask the principals, they would attest how important these positions are. We've also, and this was something that we requested to move into the operational budget last year, unfortunately, we weren't able to do that, so that funding, the funding for those positions did remain with the ESER grants. The English learner teacher, I think, you know, you've obviously heard us talk about, not just our newcomers that enrolled with us recently, but when we look at enrollment overall, and for our English language learners, that population is increasing significantly. I think, you know, when we look at, say, even compared to last year, I noticed that the year we were plus 50, Ms. Richards, and then even from there, I think, you know, plus our new students, then we've had probably another 20 on top of that. So, we're probably about a plus 100 almost from last year at this time. Again, adding new additional staffing to support those. We currently do have one posting out there for an English learner teacher to be able to provide additional support. Our teacher at the high school right now has approximately 60 students on her caseload. That certainly is just not manageable, one, not just for her, but, you know, what type of instruction and support do the students actually get? And then, when you look at our other English learner teachers, you know, they're anywhere from 20 to 30 on their caseloads right now. So, we want to make sure that we can add additional staff to provide the necessary support to our students and help them achieve the English language. Four special education teachers, again, this was previously requested. We're looking right now at, obviously, caseloads across the district, and so where those four special education teachers will finally land, somewhat to be determined. We want to make sure that as certain groups move through the grade levels, that we can continue to support them. So, if we have a certain grade level, a high number of special education students, we want to make sure that we can reallocate staff if necessary. I know we've also talked about trying to address the special education model currently at the high school, and again, you know, planning for any unforeseen increases. You know, we've had some internal conversations already about the potential of needing another substantial separate classroom, so we want to make sure that we are prepared for that. I think, you know, the other thing that I really want to, and you'll see some of our requests are focusing on special education. I think it's important to note, and I think, Mr. Thicke, that's given you said something similar to this at one point, so hopefully, I'm quoting you accurately. You know, we as a district are really judged by how we treat and educate our most vulnerable students. I think we, you know, showing up there that we really have a commitment to our students, we want to make sure that the students that are vulnerable and more at risk are receiving that support. And along those lines, we don't want to just make sure that we're, you know, providing that support, we want to make sure we're in compliance. Obviously, our special education students and our English learners, they, you know, come with a lot of, their education comes with a lot of federal regulations that we have to operate under, and there are times where, unfortunately, you know, it's a compliance issue, and, you know, making sure that we have the right ratios to support the students. But we also want to make sure that we're working with families, that we can meet the timelines that have been established. And when we don't, unfortunately, when we have compliance issues, that, you know, really destroys the family's trust in the district. And we want to make sure that we're providing not just for the students, but also for the families as well. So, along those lines, we've proposed one additional special education administrator, specifically with a focus on early childhood. I know right now that our preschool program has grown significantly over the last couple of years, and we continue to add students, we've already talked about. We have a winter screening coming up, and so we anticipate increased enrollment in preschool already, and possibly, we need to add an additional class. So, again, you know, Mr. Bray and Ms. Larkin and Ms. Joseph and Ms. Hart and the full team have done an amazing job of trying to oversee the preschool program within the vigil elementary. However, that program really deserves its own administration. However, that program really deserves its own administrator, again, not just for compliance reasons, but also to make sure that we are providing, you know, a program that's efficient and really providing the necessary supports to our students. We're also proposing four special education team chairs. This is a new position, or these are new positions, they have not been previously requested. Really, the hope here is that we would use these special education team chairs to really help facilitate and run the team meetings that are taking place at all of our buildings. This position would really be, you know, someone that has experience in the special education field, it could be certainly one of our current special education teachers, it could be a school psychologist, someone that is familiar with running the team process. Again, we feel as though it's important to make sure that we are meeting all of the deadlines, establish, you know, when the meeting has to take place, how many days from, you know, notification that needs to go off, all of those, so it's not just compliance, but it's also looking at how we can better support our current staff. You know, right now, we have, many of our staff right now are required to not just, you know, provide support and interventions, specialized instruction, but they're also, you know, they're responsible for doing the special education testing, report writing, and then some even on top of that are then required to actually run these team meetings. So I think this would just make us more efficient, we have greater oversight of, you know, the timelines and deadlines, and make us more compliant, as well as being able to provide additional support, not just to the students, but really, these positions would be providing support for our staff. Two ELA coaches, again, they, these were previously requested, we were able to use some grant funding to, you know, support these positions this year. We have Title I funds, we also have some early literacy funds through the Student Opportunity Act that we were able to utilize, typically to have our ELA coaches, are we currently have five this year?
Four.
Four this year, yes, and one math, thank you. So for ELA, we'd like to be able to propose two additional, so, you know, we'd love to be able to have all the operational budget, but we know we probably still need to use grant funding to support the three that we currently have, and, you know, we want to be able to add additional ones. Along those lines, with our math coaches, again, we've been able to support the grant funding, one math coach this year, as we rolled out our math program K through twelve, we have had significant feedback, very powerful, positive feedback along the lines of our math coach and the job that she is doing, so, again, just being able to provide additional support to our teachers, who then, you know, have that direct touch point with our students. Nine classroom teachers, and again, various levels, obviously, the focus here is not just providing additional opportunities for our students, but looking at class size as well. So when we look at the nine, the nine classroom teachers that are proposed, we have currently two at the high school, one business teacher, we've seen a pretty significant growth in our business department, I think Ms. Watson will attest to that. We're providing different offerings, zero of the last couple of years, we have been fortunate to add some staff there. Many of our students, I think, are engaged in that department. Ms. Moore is also helping out with DECA and leading that, and I think that program is growing quite significantly, and I think the competition might have actually been decently, yes, and our kids would be great. So really, we're seeing an increase there. We obviously have already talked about the need for a civics-specific program at the high school, as you know, we're required to offer civics class at the middle school and high school level. Currently, that responsibility at the high school level is kind of being absorbed in the different classes, they have to complete a civics project before they graduate, and the teachers in our history department have taken on some of that responsibility, but as Ms. Watson proposed last year, as well as I did, it would be great to have that civics teacher to be able to provide that. You know, three years ago, we tried to increase the number of teams at Bridgewater Middle School, just for scheduling purposes and obviously class size purposes. Mr. Caleb currently has three teams in sixth grade, and so two years ago, we sought to add three teams in seventh grade, three teams in eighth grade, so we always have consistent number of teachers meeting into the next grade. Thankfully, two years ago, by the support of the school committee and the town, we were able to add an additional team at Bridgewater Middle School. However, last year, we proposed to add an additional team in eighth grade, and unfortunately, the budget was not able to support that, so we are back here again to request the addition of a team at Bridgewater Middle School, which would be three additional teachers. Ms. Sharetta at RMS has requested, again, to help with class size, two additional teachers, tend to be scheduled right now from fifth grade to seventh grade based on projected enrollment, and then we've also afforded, requested two elementary teachers, again, to address class size, looking specifically where bubbles may exist. So that's an overview of those nine positions. We've also requested one additional high school music teacher. Obviously, you know, our band, our chorus, our music offerings are expanding, our students are doing a amazing job, but we know if we truly want to expand those programs, if we can support that financially, that, you know, we truly believe, build that pay will come, and that's what we've tried to do. We've added, and again, thanks to the school committee and support of the towns, we've been able to increase our staffing at the middle school level, in terms of what we're able to offer, in terms of band and chorus, the last couple of years, and what we want to be able to do is maintain that momentum, I think Ms. Sharetta, Mr. Caleb will tell you, the numbers at the middle school level have grown, and it's such a positive, positive outcome, but we want to make sure that now those students get to high school, they actually have the same opportunities, and currently, only one teacher, we can't necessarily support that. We've also proposed two unified art teachers for the middle school. Again, kind of exactly what that unified art will be is to be determined, as you know, we've discussed offering potentially foreign language at the middle schools, and we've also talked about, you know, the continuance of expanding health. I think when you look at some of our unified arts class sizes at the middle school, you know, additional staff, especially at that level, it is certainly warranted. Sixteen ESPs, so educational support professionals. As you know, we asked for additional ESPs last year, two years ago, we were able to add one ESP to every kindergarten classroom, last year, we tried to replicate that model for first grade, and unfortunately, we weren't able to support that, but here we are again, requesting the same thing. I think when you look at the requirements put forth by the state in terms of early literacy assessments, the amount of screenings that we have to do, and the required small group, when you look at some of the screenings in terms of identifying or potentially identifying students as having dyslexia, you know, that requires a lot of small group intervention remediation, you know, with our higher class size, certainly that additional support in those classrooms, we'll be able to help and provide that. I think it's also worth noting, you know, when you look at kind of our return on investment, thankfully, the school committee, again, the support of the towns, we were able to add additional positions to kindergarten, where Ms. Richards and Ms. Joyce and I take a look at the data, the achievement data of our kindergarten students compared to pre-ESPs in the classrooms, it's significant, you know, we have been able to reduce the amount of students at risk, when you compare, say, this time of year, winter to winter, prior to us having ESPs, you know, you're talking about a significant difference from, for example, one of the elementary schools had about sixty percent of our students in the at-risk category, if we reduce that down to about thirty?
Twenty.
Twenty, so, you know, again, a significant decrease. What has changed, obviously, you know, our teachers are amazing, so that certainly contributes to it, we've also been able to provide them high-quality instructional materials, but I do really believe one of the other deciding factors there is the fact that we've been able to add additional support, and so again, we're requesting additional ESPs for first grade, as well as some additional ESPs district-wide to support our special education classes. One special education secretary to help out in the special education department, this again, is making sure that we are compliant in terms of getting reports out to parents in a timely fashion, getting those back and processing those IEPs through our digital program. Again, this position, I think, is necessary in order to make sure that we are compliant under the laws and regulations that question it. We're proposing two additional assistant principals, both at the elementary level. One is for the Rainham Elementary, when I say Rainham Elementary, as you currently know, we have one assistant principal that's split between Lytlebity and Merrill, so this would be a reoccurring request where we would advocate for additional assistant principal on the Rainham side, so we would have one in each school, and then an additional assistant principal at the Mitchell Elementary. When you look at the Mitchell Elementary, it's obviously one of our lodges via behind the high school, it has a thousand-plus students with only two administrators, so we really would advocate for additional support there as well. One proctor, this proctor currently is scheduled to be for the high school to assist with daily operations and security. I know Ms. Watson has spoken in the past, and we've shared that obviously, you know, the high school's a big building, we want to make sure we have adequate staff there, not just to oversee day-to-day operations and assist with those, but obviously, potentially after hours as well. And then one technology integration specialist. You know, we have made a significant investment in technology across the district, Mr. Schatz and his department have done an amazing job putting devices in the hands of teachers, we want to make sure those teachers feel supported in using those devices, so again, bringing back that technology integration specialist position that existed at one time in the district. Three thousand series, other school services, so transportation increase, you can see approximately about two, a little over two million dollars, majority of that is transportation, obviously there's other increases, just the rate of inflation increases on other goods and services in the three thousand series, but the majority of that is us increasing our transportation line. Obviously, there's an increase in the contract with Lucini Bus Line, so we have to, you know, account for that, but we're also wanting to make sure that we are budgeting as accurately as possible, however, we also want to make sure that we're anticipating additional enrollments. You know, Ms. Hart, obviously, in her department, tried to anticipate that we may have additional students move in, especially in the special education umbrella that may require transportation either in district or out of district, however, that is sometimes a moving target, even though we anticipate on having additional students, we never really know the true number, and so this increases, I think, reflective of us trying to anticipate what a real actual number might be. I know I shared this with Budget Sub, but just even looking at the beginning of this year, we approximately, just in district vans, had to increase the number of in-district vans, which was almost two hundred thousand dollars just since the beginning of school year that we didn't necessarily anticipate, but because there was that need, we had to do that. When we look at some of our new students that have moved in, and the cost of transporting them out of district, that's also been a significant increase. I think we said six new students, Ms. Hart, just this year, again, and, you know, accounting for that. So factoring in those new students, factoring in the potential that we may need to continue these two vans that we've added this year, and already in talking with Mr. Lucini, Ms. Valverde and I went over there, review the contract and what we can anticipate for next year, based on our increased enrollment, which you can probably anticipate is happening, we may need to add additional buses, which obviously would come at an additional cost as well. So to add a bus is approximately a hundred thousand dollars and a little less, so when you factor in the increased vans, the potential of the buses on new students, you can see why we've increased transportation by almost two million dollars, and also to account for the increase in the contract. The four thousand series, operation and maintenance, so this is taking care of our buildings, any type of preventative maintenance, any type of additional maintenance, any type of reactive maintenance that we have to do, you heard this King talk about, heat pump that went down, that's not anticipated, so Mr. Kilgore and his department try to, again, anticipate those when he's building his budget, but we can't always a hundred percent guarantee that, you know, we know what's going to be coming down the road. However, that's why we try to be so proactive with preventative maintenance, to make sure that our operating systems do last as long as possible, and that we are following the manufacturer's recommended maintenance on these equipment. Thankfully, we have, you know, much of this we can do in-house, because we do have our own maintenance staff, we have an electrician, a carpenter, a plumber, however, we do have to, you know, use outside vendors for some of this maintenance, preventative maintenance, reactive maintenance work, and obviously, there's an increase there. Mr. Kilgore is looking to increase staffing in his department, we obviously want to make sure our buildings are not just clean and healthy, but obviously, you know, operating as designed, so looking to add additional custodians, looking to increase the maintenance staff to potentially include a HVAC tech, that was a position that we'd actually posted a number of years ago, unfortunately, at the time, we just, we didn't get any qualified candidates at our center, Mr. Kilgore, but we feel as though that that position could then help offset some of this preventative maintenance that we're paying to an outside vendor, that particular position could actually do a lot of that maintenance, preventative and reactive as well. And then obviously, some additional supervisory support from Mr. Kilgore, obviously, Mr. Kilgore tries to split his time between day and night and supervise all of our custodians and our maintenance staff, but certainly, as that department increases, additional support would be welcome from Mr. Kilgore and his staff. Fixed costs, again, the biggest driver here is health insurance. We anticipate for our active and retirees, health insurance to approximately increase by one point two, when we work with our insurance advisor. Those official numbers have not been released, but what they shared was, that shared with us is that we should anticipate about a ten percent increase over last year, and that's what Ms. Valverde had factored in when we were doing this, and obviously, other fixed costs, the cost of inflation are reflective of that other number. Programs in other schools, as I shared with you in the beginning, this is, again, tuition for some of our special education students, whether it be either to a collaborative, residential, state program, as you know, last year, the state had told us to anticipate a fourteen percent increase in special education tuition, so we have budgeted, we haven't necessarily got much clarification on what we should anticipate for this year, so we try to budget as close to that as possible to make sure that, you know, we are budgeting accurately, especially if we have any, as I already shared, six students move in. Capital costs, and I should say that, obviously, you'll notice these have been taken out of order, so those first few series, those considered are considered what our operational costs are. The last, through the budget development process, both towns actually approved and vote on our capital and debt separately, so that's why they were moved to the end. So what you just saw was really our operating budget, and now this is to talk about capital. These are the capital, just an overview of capital projects, certainly, we'll be sending more specific information to the towns, exactly what these projects are, but you can see there was an increase of about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Obviously, HVAC maintenance and improvements, building security improvements, working on our exterior doors, camera system upgrades, indoor and outdoor lighting projects, we are trying to as much as possible transition over to LED, especially on the exterior of our buildings and the parking lots, and then certainly on the interior, especially in our larger spaces, auditoriums, cafeteria, gyms, et cetera. Obviously, we're always looking to improve our grounds, as you know, we've had several projects over the last couple of years for our athletic facilities, we have one additional request right now from athletics to look at the playing field at the high school for baseball and softball, specifically softball, again, you know, new to me, so I apologize if people are already aware of this, there's a certain type of infield that you need, or a certain type of fill that you need on the infield in softball, and I guess what we have is pretty outdated, it's stone dust, so as our players are sliding or end up on the ground, it's basically like sliding on rocks, and they're, you know, getting cuts and scrapes, and uniforms are getting ruined, and so I guess there's a new and improved and updated fill that they would put in on the infield that are much gentler on our individual players. So that would be one improvement, as well as parking lots, I know a joke with Budget Sub, if anyone's thinking of starting a second business that we're going to pave in, certainly the cost to not just, you know, seal coat and maintain the parking lots, but any type of new additional parking lots is quite expensive. And then technology improvements at the RMS auditorium, and obviously, the high school auditorium, RMS auditorium, looking at a new projector system, and the high school P A system as well. Debt retirement services, we actually are proposing a decrease from last year, which is great, I'm sure everybody loves to see that, the reason why is we actually have two of our bonds heading short, so we're no longer required to do that, and then we have three projects that their outstanding debt is being reduced because of, you know, obviously, it's coming through maturity, and so we're proposing a reduction there. Just to give a, again, a book of what's next, obviously, I think you've heard, March thirteenth will be the public hearing on the FY twenty-five budget, March twenty-seventh, the school committee will vote to adopt the FY twenty-five budget, and then during the month of May, the budget will be taken up and hopefully approved by the Bridgewater Town Council, and Rainham Town Meeting. And obviously, I think, and again, I spoke about this in the beginning, I think the sheer fact that, you know, we have such a diverse group in the audience, between town officials, community officials, community members, and school officials, really speaks to our collective responsibility to make sure that we do meet our path to excellence. I also wanted to, as I did kind of a little bit earlier, certainly, these numbers that you saw this evening are not reflective of what was released today in the government budget, so we know that we have some work to do in terms of refining what we're proposing tonight, however, what, as a However, what, as I stated in the beginning, what we're sharing tonight is what we feel as though we need right now for personal goods and services in order to fulfill our student success plan. And again, whether that happens for next year for FY '25 or over the course of the five-year student success plan, we will certainly be most gracious either way. But I do think this is really reflective of what our needs are as a district. Obviously, there's many individuals, too many to name, so I'll certainly just group them accordingly. I do want to thank the school committee, obviously, we work with the Budget Sub and the school committee all along. I know you are true champions of the district, so thank you. Certainly, we would not be here and have such a solid budget presentation without Ms. Babalola, our Director of District Services, and Ms. Robichaud, our Chair. I have them on speed dial, talking multiple times a day, so I do appreciate their availability. Obviously, I can't thank Mrs. Barry, not the Assistant Superintendent, Ms. McDougal as well, the Executive Assistant, and the entire administrative team for all your support. I do, you know, and I, I think this is also worthy of pointing out. Ms. Babalola and I have had several meetings with town officials from both the town of Bridgewater and town of Rainham, going back to the summer. So these conversations about just our working relationship, our partnership, not just about the budget, but day-to-day operations, how we can become better partners and stronger partners, have been going off for some time. So I want to thank, obviously, Mr. Dutton and Ms. Garini from the town of Bridgewater, as well as the Town Council. Again, I appreciate your presence here. The town of Rainham, Mr. Barnes, Mr. Lomulete, the Pontius Director, and then certainly the Board of Selectmen, Mrs. Riley's here, as well as Dr. Krievendelsk, the finance. So I do appreciate your, your attendance here this evening. And I'm happy to at this point entertain any questions that we have.
Questions from the committee. Tell Mr. Powers I know Mrs. Mayfield you had a question earlier.
If we could put the slide up again. Oh, sorry.
Slide eight, wasn't it?
Four. Yeah, well, I had a couple of questions. The, the slide that had the bars and you talked about total enrollment staffing in high needs, I, I thought it would be helpful to understand the student-to-teacher ratio and how that has changed as we increased the number of students, but our staffing levels stayed the same.
So I, I actually don't have that number for you tonight. Mrs. Mayfield, I can certainly get that to you.
And as, the slide that speaks to the budget process, where it talks about the state aid and the local contributions. For Chapter 70, are there any concerns about the gaps or shortfalls in the foundation budget compared to what the district actually needs? Like, how close is our actual needs to what they usually provide based on their formula?
So I, I think, again, if you look at the last two years in terms of what we received, the increases from the prior fiscal years in Chapter 70, I think this is what we were given. Certainly, we were able to work within those numbers. You know, I, I think, overall, would we love an increase in Chapter 70? 100%, sure, because that's our main funding source. I think when you look at, say, FY '24, FY '23, you know, there was a significant increase from the years prior. A lot of that had to do with the state funding the Student Opportunity Act. When you look at what was shared today, I do have concerns in terms of us being able to beat some of those gaps based on the formula and the preliminary number that was released today for Chapter 70.
Just, so Mrs. Mayfield, I know I briefly looked at the numbers earlier today, so people understand the Chapter 70. It, it's only about a 1.7 increase this year. What came out today, again, it was released at like 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock this afternoon. So people haven't had a lot of time to digest it, but it's like $500,000 additional increase than what was this past year. So it's a significantly lower percentage than we've received over the years.
And so if I'm understanding what you're saying and what you said, Mr. Powers, that at, in years, that you kind of work within the budget that they give you. So you don't necessarily have identified a gap between what the true needs are and you kind of just work with what they give you and reduce your needs?
Well, yes, unfortunately, our, our budget is driven by what the funding that we received is. So our funding obviously comes from the state, through state aid, and then obviously, through the towns. So we have to work within the confines of that funding.
So when you do a proposal, it doesn't necessarily indicate what the needs are? If, if your budget is based on what you anticipate receiving from the state and the local towns? Am I hearing that correctly?
Uh, no. So actually, the budget that you saw tonight was based on what our needs are, not based on what the funding that we anticipated getting, because we didn't know, because the information just came out today. So what we'll do then, well, we, I say, the Budget Sub and the Business Office and I will work through what we anticipate now, now that we have more concrete numbers, we have a better sense of what the budget will actually look like. We'll have to start going through this and say, okay, based on that funding that we anticipate, what can be supported based on what you just saw for a proposal or what unfortunately needs to be eliminated and potentially asked for again in future years?
So that helps. So how many times, or, well, for the past years, have you had your budget, seen what the funding in is, and then adjusted it? I'm trying to understand the gap between what is the need.
Every year, every year.
Okay, so every year, you're getting the, the calculation that the state determines that you need is every year lower than what the.
It's not just the state, it's the towns too. You've got to look at all three of them.
Oh, no, I know, but I was focused just on Chapter 70.
So I, I would say, you know, to that point, when we look at what we proposed last year for a budget, it was, the preliminary budget was approximately $104 million. Again, kind of reflective of everything that we felt was that we needed at the time to be successful and fulfill our future student success plan. When we actually look at what we received, obviously, it was $94 million. So we knew that we, we had to reduce what we asked for by about $10 million. When you look at the years prior, FY '23 and FY '22, you know, there, there was an increase in Chapter 70 those years. Obviously, there's a lot of additional funding given to districts by not just the federal, the state government because of COVID. So when we were asking for additional positions, you know, there weren't many in the FY '23 year that we didn't put forward, that we didn't actually get. Again, you know, looking back at those years, we weren't asking for 60 positions because we were kind of doing it a little bit different in terms of what do we need right now for next year versus what do we need to fulfill our five-year strategic plan? So in terms of, you know, what the state talented with the support, say, two fiscal years ago, is, was a little bit different because of the funding that was available, not just by the towns, but obviously by the state because of the influx of COVID funding. But yes, typically, what has happened is the number that we present during a preliminary budget like tonight is typically reduced, depending on how many positions have been asked for. Anywhere from, you know, five to 10 positions. If we've asked for 10, I would say on average, we get anywhere from three to five on a, you know, a fairly good year. So that kind of gives you a, I guess, an indication of what we typically do. Yes, every year, it's more than likely a reduction.
Do you have a question, Mr.? Just to comment on that. So even for people that are in the audience or that may not be familiar with the process totally, this preliminary budget, as Mr. Powers eloquently put it, it's a needs-based budget that would fulfill the student success plan. If we receive the funding and we're able to fill up these positions, get all of these supplies and resources, this is what he thinks would be enough resources to make our district, give it all of our staff, all of our students, the resources to become fully successful based on our student success plan. However, we do not fund ourselves, so we rely on Chapter 70 money, some of our own revenue, which isn't substantial, and then money from Bridgewater and Rainham. And they're constrained by their own budgets as well. So we will get Chapter 70 money from the state, which isn't going to be the number that we were hoping for. But also, the towns are not going to get the number they're hoping for either. So then they're constrained by, one of their departments that they will need to fund. So it's really a team effort and funding from multiple sources. So between now and the public hearing, Budget Sub and Mr. Powers, the Business Office, will meet several times and try and look at that budget and get it down to a reasonable number that we know, based on Chapter 70 money, which we have today, and based on conversations with the town, what are they going to be able to fund? Because we're going to have to present the public hearing number and vote a budget in large and send that budget to the towns. We do not want to send a budget to the towns, but they are not going to be able to fund. So it needs to be a realistic number. But tonight, this is what Mr. Powers feels would make us successful. Can we fund that? Probably not. But I think it's really important for us as a committee, as a community, as the towns and parents to see what is important to us. Maybe we didn't get foreign language last year, maybe we don't get foreign language this year in middle school. That's my hill that I've been on. But eventually, we're hoping that if people see this, maybe the funding will come through and it was something that we're showing that is important. And the music department, these things are, I think, are important for us to show even if they do not get through the public process.
Other question, Mrs. Mayfield.
Back to these, like, grids that you clearly brought up, just a quick question, because I know you can get back to a number that I definitely be interested to. So like that staffing number, like the staff in the whole district, regardless of.
Uh, no, so that's reflective of certified staff. So that, when you look at our total staff between facilities, maintenance.
Yeah, administrators.
Everybody, we're 600 plus.
Okay, okay. So this is just like certified students, I mean, teachers?
Yes, yeah, teachers, school psychologists, school adjustment classes, nurses, anyone that's really, you know, has a direct touch point with a student.
Okay, yeah, because it's just like really alarming, because I think what in 2012, it was like 29% to shy of 30 for high needs, and it's, that's like 1,600 students. And we only went up from then, it's 400 students in total, but we went up 800 students in high needs.
Yes.
And we only went up 15 teachers. So it's, yeah. Just something to look at. And in regards to. Now, this is like, I mean, what you guys had about the, it was like 60% when you added the ESP, before you added the ESPs, right? And then you went down to 20% and you're seeing that difference?
Uh, yes, at, at the early, in kindergarten, as we talked about, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean, I think that's huge. And obviously, whatever we can do, maybe you just keep at least the ESPs that you have, because I know you can't go up in grade, like, add it on the classrooms in the lower grade in Rainham, and we don't have the one. But just with the more students we have, I think just having that extra resources is whatever we can do to keep those.
Other question. And I would also, just to your point, Ms. Duffport and Mrs. Mayfield, you know, if you all want to look, Desi's website actually gives the student-to-teacher ratio for all years. And you can go back probably 15 years, and it's all there for every school within Reno and the district. It's reported on the Desi website, and every district is across the state. And it actually, you can compare it statewide also for student-to-teacher ratio.
Yeah, I guess my, my biggest concern is like the high needs, the biggest jump.
Right.
And then compared to not as.
Right, yeah. And it also compares high needs percent to the change. It gives all that to the graphics by school, by district on Desi's website. So it, it, there's a lot, and kind of overwhelming that amount of data that's there. But there's also a lot more data, actually, that's there.
Just a point, if you do, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mrs..
Check. If you are looking at student-to-teacher ratio on the Desi website, they do factor in that total number of certified staff with the student population. So it, it might be somewhat misleading. You might see a student-to-teacher ratio of, say, 14 to 1. But you've already heard, we don't have class sizes of 14. That factors in every certified staff, not just classroom teachers.
Other question, Mr. Fitzgibbon.
Thank you. Just a few clarifying questions, if I may, Mr. Powers.
Of course.
You, you're essentially proposing a $103 million initial budget, operating.
Yes.
Operating budget. And is it your opinion that were that budget to be funded, we would have all of the staff we needed to execute on our student success plan over the next five years? What I'm asking is, we wouldn't be coming back in the absence of, obviously, student growth, population-wise, but we wouldn't be coming back next year and saying, we need more for the same number of students, we need more staff?
Well, I, I, I think that's, that's a great question, Mr. Fitzgibbon. And I, I can't say we wouldn't be coming back. I do think there's other positions, you know, when you look at, say, I'll use this as an example, the high school music teacher. You know, we've also, at one time, we had additional art staff at the high school. And so I think when you look at, say, the fine arts overall, you know, could we increase that? You know, we look at some of the requirements at the high school in terms of physical education. You know, and again, back to compliance. You know, if, if trying to prioritize, yes, I think this would be the majority of positions. I, I don't want to say.
That's fair. I mean, there, there'd be above and beyond, I guess what I'm asking is, there'd be above and beyond additional positions next year that wouldn't just be student growth, but things that have been intentionally. Left out, if you will, not left out.
No, I know what you're saying.
Things that, positions that haven't been accounted for, okay, yeah.
There would certainly not be another 60 positions.
Right, no, no, no. It's the most, it's the blind check, yeah. Okay, second, if I may. To, to, oh, yeah, when, when we talk about adding 60 staff, we have, and then we have our fixed cost series. Is that staff included in the fixed cost series? So that their insurance and everything like that is included in that fixed cost?
Yes, we, we do feel as though when we looked at increasing staffing and what we had budgeted for health insurance, that that would be able to absorb if we were able to get those 60 staff members.
Okay, so the 1.2 million anticipated health insurance cost increase is based on 60 additional staff, not just the staff we have today?
Uh, correct, includes additional staff. And using that 10% anticipated increase, we're hoping, like this past year, it wasn't as much as that. So we're hoping when we get that final number, that, you know, we might not necessarily need to have all that money tied up in insurance.
No, that, that makes sense, thank you. Transportation increase of approximately $2 million. That's a number that you're relatively confident in, that we will have to pay next year. I mean, within a margin of error, obviously, but it's not going to be 200,000. And it's not going to be 5 million. It's going to be between, let's call it, 1.5 and 2.5 million.
Yes, what we really try to do is obviously look at what the contract calls for. Look at what we are spending, slated to spend this year. And obviously, I've already, you know, kind of gone over some of those unanticipated increases. We do feel as though that that increase would be as accurate as possible without the, to your point, the unknowns. We would certainly have a few additional movements that maybe we didn't include or, you know, some unforeseen. But yes, we do feel that 2, that $2 million would be closer to what we anticipate versus, you know, when we're talking budgets up now, you obviously see some of those lines. I think we probably, you know, under budgeted, so we want to make sure that we're.
So I, I guess my, my point is that $2 million is on a current operating budget of just under 90 million. So that's driving a 2% increase in what we need to do right out of the gate, essentially.
Yes, there are some of those, exactly, some of those fixed costs that are just driving the budget even before we add any type of additional.
Yeah, and, and the same thing for tuition costs. That, that's another, that's another 6 tenths of a percent roughly. So with 2.6% increase in just to fund those fixed costs and, and tuition. So that's a number everyone has to bear in mind. And then I do want to just point out that actually, the town of Bridgewater is the biggest funding source of the district, of 32 million. Chapter 70 is 31, town of Rainham is 21 million. But what the key thing is about Chapter 70 is because it's roughly, and I will include Chapter 71. and I hope who Chapter Seventy wanted, it's roughly forty percent of our total revenue if you add those two together, right? If the state is only going to increase you one percent, right? Then we have, and, and we, we ask just for three percent overall budget increase, and the state's only going to give you one on forty percent of your revenue. You've got, that leverages both towns to have to pay four to five percent increase in their assessment just to get to a three percent overall number for ourselves. And, and, and that's very important for everyone to realize is, you know, the state also, and please reach out to your state senators and state representatives to, to advocate for fair treatment of regional school districts in the budget. Um, they, they have to maintain a reasonable inflationary increase in Chapter Seventy and Seventy-One to really make this work. Otherwise, we're just, both our towns are getting leveraged by the money the state will give us. Is that fair?
Yes, I think that's fair to say, and I think that's a great point. You know, when we look at, as Madam Chair, as King shared, you know, we look at a five-hundred thousand, approximately a five-hundred thousand dollar increase from last year in Chapter Seventy. We have been factoring or counting on, really, what we've received the last couple of years, which is anywhere from three to four million more from the previous year. You know, we were hoping that was going to be the case. So if, you know, and we're anticipating that revenue to come in, yes, now that burden shifts, to your point, Mr. Fitzgibbon, unfortunately, to the towns. And we want to obviously be a partner with them and work with what they can provide us. And, you know, we all, I think all want the same thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Davenport.
Mr. Powers, out of the thirteen interventionists, how many of these, are these including ones with Esser grant money that are left?
Uh, yes, a great point, yes. So the ones, we currently have eight, Mr. Emmerino, currently eight interventionists across the district at the elementary, middle school, and high schools. So this would be an increase, obviously, to those eight. Our ultimate goal would be to keep the eight that we currently have, certainly first and foremost. And then if funding is available, to be able to add additional interventionists.
Just a follow-up. Can you just detail for the audience how important these positions are for our students?
Absolutely, I, I think, you know, when we start to look at, again, the, the needs and gaps. I, I know we're a couple of years out from COVID, but I think the, you know, we're still seeing the long-term effects and impacts of COVID. We have to remember that our students, you know, were at home for a good portion of time. And unfortunately, that, especially with our, our students now that are in, say, third, fourth, fifth grade, that, that was their formative years, they were kindergarten, first grade. You know, that, that, we have a lot, unfortunately, there's gaps. And we have some, you know, work to do to close those gaps. These interventionists are assisting, obviously, our classroom teachers who are working, you know, as hard as they possibly can. But they're able, again, provide those additional opportunities, additional support for mediation, acceleration to the students that may have, you know, demonstrating a particular gap in a, could be a particular topic, could be a particular subject. Obviously, we're focusing most of our efforts on early literacy. And then obviously numeracy as well as we go up, say, in the upper grades, and then high school as well. But yes, I, I can't say enough how important these positions are to our overall student success. And I think our principals would attest, you know, anytime we go into a building, Barry and I will block the buildings, we're always seeing the interventionists with small groups of students providing that additional support. So they, they are, again, just like the rest of our staff, they're working side by side. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Powers, along those lines, I know nationally and within the state, there, there's a lot of talk around this at the Esser Court and what is happening. Um, excuse me, you talked about the eight positions that are in the interventionist. Are there other positions that we have that are being funded through the Esser grant money that are going to drop?
Uh, no, we were very mindful not to move any other positions over the operational budget that weren't already presented to you. You know, we felt as though that we wanted to avoid this potential, this potential cliff. And so we really were mindful of that. And, you know, we, over the last two years, incrementally moved some of those positions from Esser funding. We look at some of our school nurses that we were able to add through Esser funding. They were included in the operational budget, but really, our interventionist position we have the bulk of that, and we did keep them on the Esser grants. Uh, so to answer your question, I'm not sure if I, how do we say? No, we do not have any other position being funded by...
Any other question? I have one more question. Um, can I go to slide twelve? Um, there's a couple of things that, as far as when you look back at the past years, FY twenty-one, say, FY twenty-two budget, were there any significant difference between the final approved budget and the actual spending in the district? And another way to ask this is, like, how often does the district need to use its savings? E and D funds to balance the budget each year?
So typically, what happens each year, I, I guess, if I, if I know what you're asking, we sort of give you an answer, and then if not, a certain, we're preaddressing. We don't necessarily use at the end of the year the E and D fund to, to help offset and balance our current budget. What we typically do is use E and D for a future budget. So at the end of the year, any type of surplus funds that we may have goes into E and D. Once that is reviewed and certified, you know, obviously, this staff level has a sense of what's going to be in there. And then what we do is, a school committee does vote to use some of that E and D to offset the next year's budget. And that could range very, depending on the year, depending on the financial situation that we may be faced with, could be, you know, we, school committee votes to improve using a million dollars from E and D to help offset the assessments of the towns for next year's budget. So it's not necessarily ever used, or at least to my knowledge, has been used in current situations to help balance the budget. It's typically used for future budgets. Uh, you know, it's, it's used for other things as well. I mean, we've obviously used some of it for the track of tennis court project. But those were above and beyond expenses. Obviously, the price came in higher. We did have that money in there, so we were obviously able to use some of that money for those purposes.
With the dissonance?
Uh, yes, yeah.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, it is rare that you need additional funds each year? It's like what you budget is what you spend?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So you just kind of do without them? You, this one?
Yeah, it's not, I guess if we were equated to, say, at-home spending, it's not, oh, the checkbooks are a little light, I'm going to move some money from savings. That's not, whatever we are budgeted, that's what we have for our money, and that's what we use.
Is there under spending?
Uh, there are times where, again, we end up with a surplus at the end of the year. We might anticipate that a certain line. For example, transportation. There have been years where transportation hasn't exceeded what we anticipated. And actually, we get credit for Mr. Lucini, and Luci, I shouldn't say just for Mr. Lucini, but Lucini, because of fuel costs are lower than anticipated. So there, there could be surplus funding there. We may not have as many students going out of district. Or maybe we had, I'll just give a, you know, a rough number, this is certainly inaccurate, ten students that are out of district, all of a sudden, this department brings three of those students back in district. That's now a savings that we weren't counting on. So, and yes, there are times where we do have surplus funding at the end of the year. And again, that money goes right into E and D.
How often does that happen?
I would say every year, as far as we've always had money at the end of the year to put in there. And again, the amounts vary depending on the year and what may be left. You know, again, if it's, if it's a winter like last year, we'll probably have a little bit more because we didn't have all the heating costs a person, hey, or we didn't have to, you know, put the plows out as many times and sand, so we'll have some savings there. There's been years where it's been less than a million. Because, you know, we obviously want to be, try to be as conservative as possible. We want to, this is what we've asked the towns and the state for. We want to try to spend as much as possible, but know that we also want to be able to help the towns in our situation of falling here.
So do you ever put that into the budget items that you've taken out, say, mid-year, when you see that your spending is under budget and you have the resources? Versus does having any of those savings and rolling it into E and D maybe, does that ever happen?
Uh, yes, I, I, I know it's happened. I can't necessarily give you a concrete example, but yes, there have been times where, middle of the year, we might need an additional nurse, a teacher, additional ESP, or, you know, even a substantially separate program. But maybe we're out of compliance as a whole because we have so many students. And we certainly worked with this staff level or our team to say, okay, what do we have budgeted? You know, yep, we actually, you know, the teacher that we hired, their salary was less than anticipated, so obviously, you know, there's a little savings there. So that we might be able to shed that money and actually bring some of those additional staff numbers on. Or there's times where we need things, the principals might say, I'm on a copy paper. And again, we'll kind of go through the line and say, oh, actually, we didn't order as much as we anticipated, or one school used more, one school used less, and we can, you know, move that one.
Thank you, Mrs. Davenport.
So if I could, historically, we have typically taken between one and one-point-five million from E and D every year to offset the following year's operational budget. So I would expect the budget subcommittee to look at that again for this coming budget. Um, I, I think that that's something that we have tried to do as a show of support to our, to our funding sources as the towns, not so much at the state level, but from the towns' perspective. That it is a three-way street, if you would. Yes, the majority comes from our towns, but we also take out of our savings as well. I do want to just point out as a, a piece that I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of. So there are times where the school committee does have to vote to take money out of E and D, typically in the summer, September time, when we get a late bill from the previous fiscal year. When that happens, we have to vote as a school committee to take the money from E and D to pay that bill. We cannot pay that bill from the operating, or the budget that we're currently in. We have to go back and take it out of E and D to pay it.
Because you already rolled that money over?
Correct, that money's been rolled into E and D, and therefore, we go back to E and D to get it and pay it. But that is done strictly by us through a vote. That's not something the administration can do on their own. That has to be a certified vote by the school committee.
And I'd just like to emphasize what Mr. Dolan said. I, I mean, if you look at slide number nine and you look at the budget process, sources of funding, uh, we've got this, you've got a district line that's one-point-four million, one-point-six, one-point-six, and then for this current fiscal year, two-point-two. And that's mostly made up of E and D rollover. So when we talk about using E and D for operations, what really happens is, because the superintendent always puts a, a budget freeze on, what, October first, then, you know, you're not going to spend money unless you have a really good reason to spend money after October first on, on whatever. And so that's what generates some of the E and D money as well, is that, you know, there's a lot of hawks over there looking, making sure the money is being spent correctly, which I love, thank you. And, and, and so then what happens is, we generate this extra, and it's used to help fund the next year's operations. So that you're not running right on the ragged edge of zero all the time, but you've got a little bit, and then you know, okay, now I can roll a little bit to next year with the plan of doing the same thing. You know, I think that's the best way to describe it.
It, it is, and if I could, by, by state law, we are allowed to carry five percent of our budget in E and D. And as long as I've been around, we've never had five percent. We have always spent, so I just, that is...
Which would mean four to five million dollars.
Correct, correct. So I just want to sort of add that to the, to the conversation as well. The state does allow us to have up to five percent.
And right now, we care a lot, we try not to go below one-point-five?
Historically, for me, that's where I like to sit, never below one-point-five. But you just, right, you just don't know. I mean, one day, a boiler could go kaput in this building, and if, that's on us.
Is that what we have in there now?
Uh, I think it was certified, three-point-two, three-point-seven.
Three-point-seven million, you know, the...
Well, but we took, we took money already for this year out of that three-point-seven. To the track of tennis courts, essentially, yeah. And then that money will be used to offset next year's budget.
Yeah.
I, I just want to thank Mr. Powers and the administration. This is not an easy process at all. I know that this is something that takes a lot of effort and a lot of time from all of you. And unfortunately, this is where, as we used to say, the pencils get sharpened. And unfortunately, positions, I can't imagine we're going to be able to move forward with all sixty positions. But, so I, I want to thank you all for that work, because it's not, it's not easy.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, to our town officials, thank you for being here. Please, all right.
Um, next to move on to Mrs. Babalula in electricity contract.
Oh, yes, we have to approve, we have to motion.
Oh, we do, oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry, I'm sorry.
So I'll make a motion to approve, to, uh, sorry, refer the budget, the preliminary budget to the budget, the twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget. Why am I... Uh, motion to refer the twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget to the budget subcommittee for further pencil sharpening. Second?
Uh, motion has been made by Mr. Jones, second by Mrs. King. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Deposed, motion passed. Sorry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Superintendent Powers, and members of the audience. My mission here tonight is to present to you the district electricity contract, E and P fifty-five for the upcoming school years. It has been five years since the statewide electricity contract, E and E forty-nine, was awarded. This contract will end this year, September twenty-twenty-four. Last year, the OSD consultant, Mr. Irving, presented to the budget subcommittee on the proposed contract that state is currently working on. The primary focus of this is to help government agencies and businesses succeed in procuring commodities such as this. This new contract, E and E fifty-five, will seek to identify buyer vendors who will service entrusted eligible entities. This contract has benefited the district tremendously. We felt joining this pool of buyers going forward will continue to foster bulk changes in power, and the district will also benefit from the expertise of procuring such commodity. The initial term on this contract is up to thirty-six months, with a renewal for up to two or three, up to one or two options, which maybe has to be based on the individual term length, by not more than a total of five years. The new contract will start on September four, on September first, twenty-twenty-four. In the current contract, prices for twelve, between twelve and thirty-six months, were around eight cents per kilowatt. It was communicated to us that although prices fell in twenty-twenty-three, but the market is predicting higher prices for the following reasons. Number one, lack of pipeline capacity. Number two, the growing demand of electricity out there. And also geopolitics, which is a war that is going on in Ukraine and also in the other part of the world. So based on these reasons, the current indicators... So based on these reasons, the current indicative pricing as of September twenty-twenty-three for a September twenty-twenty-four contract is projected at, for a twelve-month, twelve-month contract, it's about twelve cents a kilowatt. Twenty-four-month contract, it's about the same thing, about twelve cents. Change for the thirty-six-month contract is also about twelve month, I mean, twelve cents. So overall, we're looking at between forty-two percent and forty-eight percent increase over what we currently pay. So in summary, we want to know the new contract rate on the procurement is concluded in April twenty-twenty-four, which is this year, a few months. So, we have been advised by the, by our consultants to anticipate a fifty percent increase over what we currently pay. So therefore, I am requesting for permission to participate on behalf of this district in the upcoming E and D fifty-five bid contract for up to thirty-six-month term, with about one or two options to increase, based on the initial term for a maximum five years. Thank you.
Want to allow Miss Babalula to enter into negotiations?
Motion been made by Mr. Fitzgibbon, second by Mrs. King. Discussion? Any discussion?
We, we heard about this at an earlier school committee meeting, and I think this is just pro forma to allow her to do it.
Thank you. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, choice?
Kind of a collective effort here, Madam Chair. So yes, as you know, each year, school committee is responsible for approving school choice for the upcoming school year. It certainly is, or certainly as a school committee, you have the option of, of approving it or not approving it. Certainly, a not approval requires a little bit more work in, in terms of what the next steps are. But Ms. Watson and Ms. Babalula and I, and Mr. McPhee, we've spoken about school choice for next year. We would like to continue on with the program. Obviously, you know, there are some benefits to being a school choice district, in that we do receive additional funding for these students that, you know, school choice in. However, you know, there are some times where it does place a, a burden on the district, and so that's something that we need to review in terms of class size. You know, as Ms. Watson has shared in the past, we've limited the grade levels certain years because of class size, and I know looking ahead to next year, that would also be our proposal, that obviously, you know, continue to allow the students that are currently here on school choice to remain, but obviously, we would like to limit, for next year, for class size. But Ms. Babalula, I didn't include anything, or if there's anything else to add, or Ms. Watson, I didn't accurately capture that?
Nine through twelve?
I'm sorry, that's a, that's probably, that's, that's a good question, Ms. Martelli. Uh, yes, ninth grade, we would propose that the next year, for ninth grade only.
Ninth grade only?
Is there a certain amount of slots?
Uh, in terms of new enrollees, obviously, students that are here in the other grades would allow, be allowed to stay, yes.
Is there a certain amount of slots? Like, how does it work? I'm not wicked familiar.
Oh, sure, no, absolutely. So it really is, it starts with a conversation with Ms. Watson, when we look at enrollment, what's projected for next year, coming up from eighth grade. Obviously, we know that we're going to have some students, you know, leave the district because they're going to go to vocational school or private school, but then we look at what currently we can anticipate for class size, what offerings we can currently, you know, provide these students and the students that are currently in school choice, and obviously, within the district, and we then make a recommendation. In years past, we have opened it up, nine through twelve, if enrollment has been down at high school. The last couple of years, we've seen enrollment start to increase at high school level. So again, it's just something we want to be cautious about, although there are benefits because of the revenue stream, you know, there are some cons, I guess you would say, to do it as well.
Is there a certain schools that we're part of, like, who is it up, like, is it end up?
Uh, it really, yes, once we elect to take students in, they can come from anywhere around. I would say, you know, Taunton, Brockton, Lakeville, Freetown, West Bridgewater, really the surrounding towns, because we don't provide transportation, it really is on the families, or, you know, depending on the age of the student, to get transportation. So I would say pretty much local, but we have had students a little bit further away than, than you would imagine.
If Mr. Fitzgibbon?
I know last year, we did it, grades nine through twelve, just said that if they enroll in that, they can stay. Where this is grade nine, if we get a student that chooses to come here, are they allowed to come back from the pandemic, if, say, next year, we're at capacity, you know, we're not going to opt into it, how does that work?
Yes, right now, we're anticipating that any student that enrolls in grade nine would be able to finish his or her high school career here at the yard, that they would move up through the grade levels.
And Mr. Powers, one question I have is the, I was down for it a little bit, is that the slots, it's kind of variable, depending on how many kids actually come, so we really don't know those number of slots until summer. And what I know about some other schools that do school choice, some kids are getting accepted two or three days before school starts because of some of the changing numbers and all that.
Students decide.
And also, they get accepted somewhere else.
It's a move, the number's moving, yes, the number moves a little bit.
Yes.
So we don't have to accept people, like, what do they submit to, like, apply, is there an application to apply?
So there is an application, they do have to apply. There is not many restrictions that the state allows districts to put on. Students that elect, you know, where they obviously have to go through the process, and the process had to be complete, but in terms of us looking at, you know, academics, disciplinary data, all of those can be exclusionary factors. So basically, if a student applies for school choice, has completed the process, has applied on time, and we have open slots, we can cap it. So for example, if Ms. Watson says, you know, I'll just throw a number up, fifty students, and, you know, sixty apply.
She's like, yeah, stop, stop.
No.
Yeah, how do you decide?
So then that would become lottery.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, in the past, we timestamp the applications as they come in, so, you know, this one's first, this one's second, this one's third, it's, it's no lottery, it's like whoever gets there first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve school choice for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year for the ninth grade only.
Second. A motion debated by Mr. Dawn, second by Ms. Martelli. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is the approval of the warrants dated December fourteenth, December twenty-eighth, and January eleventh. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Motion debated by Mr. Fitzgibbon, second by Mrs. King. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And, other business? Anyone public comment? At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Ms. King.
Chair, do you mind if I have a couple of announcements?
Sure.
Just some dates. On January thirtieth, Rainham will be having a meeting, so I will be attending that because now it's all things budget related, so I will attend that and report back. January thirty-first, I contacted Tracy Norvik at M A S E, and I will be holding a Chapter Seventy professional development for the school committee, so we can kind of delve into that about funding and foundation budget, et cetera, so we're going to have that, which is, hopefully, will help kind of relieve that burden, so we can understand that more fully. And then our first budget meeting will be February fifth, and we will go over all things, again, budget that we did for next year.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Mr. Dawn, is it Mr. Fitzgibbon?